All right, welcome back everyone. I'd like to reconvene this December 17th, 2021 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah? Let's see. Probably need to get Sam promoted. Not on yet, he'll be on. I vote yes. We're at quorum and we are now reconvened. So let's go to calendar number 514-21-Z, and this is on Prairie Avenue. And this is Counselor Tyler Mannix. So Tyler, let us know when you're present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tyler Mannix for the record. Can I proceed?
Yeah, you may, and we're just consistently asking if there's objectors. So again, if there's any objectors for this matter, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, Tyler Mannix, Shane Banks, Kenny and Schwartz. I'm here on behalf of OHS Properties LP, which owns a property of 4433 South Prairie. The property is currently a vacant lot. The applicant seeks a variation to reduce the required automobile parking spaces from three to two parking spaces in order to erect a three-story, three-dwelling unit residential building with a detached garage. The CTA Green Line elevated train tracks run along the rear property line of the lot. There is a structural pier supporting the train tracks that is located just outside the lot's rear property line. During the zoning department's review of the applicant's building permit application, the plan examiner determined that the structural pier prevented the third parking space that was being proposed from having adequate clearance to meet the zoning ordinance requirements. As a result, the plan examiner advised that this third parking space that was being proposed needs to be considered storage and the applicant needs to obtain this variation to reduce the parking space requirements by one space. All other aspects of this project comply with the RM5 zoning district regulations that existed when the applicant purchased this property, as well as all other requirements of the Chicago Building Code. This block consists predominantly of similar multifamily uses so that this development maintains the character of the area. In addition, this development is located a block away from Indiana Green Line CTA Train Station, a few blocks away from the 43rd Street Green Line CTA Station, and within a block of numerous other CTA bus routes within a block radius, making this a transit serve location where vehicles are unnecessary. Plus, there's plenty of street parking available. This variation is necessary to develop the property and overcome the hardships related to the CTA structural pier that is unique to this location. With our presentation, we did provide the board an email from Alderwoman Dowell, who said she supports this project. The applicant also met with each of the adjacent neighbors, exchanged contact info to go over this project and to go over the anticipated construction schedule. Each of the adjacent neighbors support this project as well. With that, I'd go on to our witnesses, Gary Wans, the architect, and Scott Albright, the representative of the applicant.
Scott, Scott Albright here.
Great. And Scott, can you state your address, please?
514 East 95th Street, Chicago, Illinois 60619.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Mr. Albright, you're a part of the ownership of the applicant, correct?
I am.
And in addition, in addition to being a developer, you are also a licensed general contractor, correct?
I am.
And in connection with this application, did you sign an affidavit that was submitted to the zoning board prior to today?
I did.
And are the statements you made in that affidavit true and correct?
They are.
And do you adopt here today, the testimony provided in the affidavit as your testimony here in this proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Chairman, unless there's questions for Mr. Albright, I move on to Mr. Wans.
So let's give Mr. Wans on and then we'll circle back for questions. So Mr. Wans, if you're on, can you state your name and address, please?
Hello, my name is Gary Wans. I reside at 1130 North Dearborn Street, Unit 2401, Chicago, Illinois 60610.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Mr. Wans, you're an architect licensed with the state of Illinois, correct?
Yes.
And you prepared the plans that are part of this application, correct?
Yes.
And did you sign an affidavit that was submitted to the zoning board as part of this application?
Yes, I did.
And are the statements you made in that affidavit true and correct?
It is correct, yes.
And do you adopt the testimony you provided in that affidavit as your testimony here today?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that are on our findings of fact or this testimony.
Great. Any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Could the applicant please just describe any conditions in the neighborhood that make you feel comfortable with the not having that additional parking spot?
Mr. Albright, could you just kind of describe kind of the street parking available as well as the CTA options?
Yes, I think as far as density goes, I mean, there's a fair amount of street parking here. And so I don't, I don't see that as an issue.
And you're also a block away from the Indiana Green Line stop, correct?
Correct.
And you're a couple of blocks away from the 43rd Street Green Line?
Correct.
And there's several bus routes nearby as well, right?
Yes.
And you talked to adjacent neighbors when you were about the construction of this project and they're all fine with this project, correct?
Yeah, they were, they were excited to, you know, these, these, there are two vacant lots that had been sitting vacant for many years. So they were excited to see hopefully construction going up there and, you know, new construction on the block.
Great. Any other questions from the board? All right, we've got what we need. We'll take this under consideration and thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. Happy holidays.
You too.
Okay, we're going to go to calendar number 515-21-S. Again, on this one, which is on North Halsted Street. If anyone here is here to object, please just raise your hand and we will get you promoted to do so. As Counselor Tom Moore gets situated, I'm going to read the department's recommendation on this. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
And hopefully we have Tracy Podesta. Is Ms. Podesta available?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Great.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing that Tracy?
Yes, Ms. Podesta, will you state your name and address?
Hi, yes, my name is Tracy Podesta and I live at 2200 West Erie, Chicago 60612.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So Tracy, you, how long have you been a hairstylist?
Since 1988.
And all of that time you've worked for other people, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you have the state license, is that correct?
Yes.
And then, but now at this stage of your life, you would like to have your own business, so you sought out a lease at this address, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And it's, I don't know, it's an old Baroque building and we, we went, we notified the alderman's office and of course, they asked us to talk to the Lincoln Central Group, Community Group, and we did that and they wanted to just make sure you weren't, you were going to keep the nature and feel of this building and weren't going to have any flashing signs or anything like that, is that right?
That is correct.
And as a matter of fact, you spent some extra money to keep the historic door and entranceway that as it is, is that right?
That is correct.
And so how many, you're going to start off by yourself, but how many chairs would you have in addition to yourself eventually?
I have 12 chairs, so I can employ 11 other operators, probably four apprentices, four receptionists.
Okay, and you, you have a book of business already yourself who will follow you here, is that right?
That is correct.
So you're not, you're not planning on taking anyone, I mean, you'll take walk-ins or new appointments, but you're not planning on taking anybody else's business away, is that right?
That's right.
And what will your hours be?
In the beginning, I'll be open Monday to Saturday, probably nine to six and a little bit later on Thursday evening.
Okay, and then you and I have worked out a witness statement where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant your special use. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that statement, is that right?
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, Tracy will be available for questions. Also, hopefully, Mr. Joe Ryan is on the call.
I am. Great. And Joe has been sworn in and his expertise has been acknowledged.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Joe Ryan, at my request, did you look into whether or not you thought, did you do a study and a report on whether or not having a hair salon at this address would have a negative effect on the surrounding property values?
I did and it would not.
And did you also look at all the other criteria necessary for this board to grant a special use at this location? And will you tell them whether you think this application can meet each and every one of those?
Yes, I examined all of the criteria. This use fits very well in on the Halsted Street corridor and it would have no effect on a property value. It's in the interests of public convenience. There's no parking issues, there's no pedestrian issues. It's a well-traveled street and fits right in there.
And you made a report and if you were to continue to testify, we filed that report with the board and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
I would, yes.
Mr. Chairman, that is our case in chief. Both of these people are available for questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? And Ms. Podesta, just to confirm, are you, are you doing nails or anything else like that at the salon?
Not at first. I may do nails eventually, but I'm not applying for license to do that right now.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, let's go to calendar number 516-21-Z at 1906 West Warner Avenue. So while we get the counselor on, again, if anyone is here to object on this matter, please just raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. Okay, Counselor, go right ahead.
You were wonderful.
John, I think you're on mute and Tom, you're not. Let's see if we've got John Fikarsky.
All right, can you now hear me?
Yes.
Yay!
Oh, wonderful. I have with me two witnesses regarding 1906 West Warner. Unfortunately, both of them have scheduled their COVID tests for this afternoon. So they should both be on by telephone only. I have with me Francesca Madden, the co-owner of the property, along with her husband Matthew Madden. Are you there, Francesca?
Yes, I am. I am here, John. I'm in my car.
Okay, and Kimberly Smith, the architect. Are you there?
I'm here too. Yep, in my car as well.
Okay. Briefly put, this is in addition to the rear of the single-family home of Mr. and Mrs. Madden. There currently exists an unenclosed back porch. And essentially, what we are doing is taking down the old porch, putting a basement under it, under what was the old porch and creating a first floor mudroom and den. The property in question measures 50 frontage feet. The client and her husband and three children have lived there for 15 years. And they need slightly more room. The first floor will be improved with, with a den, basically. And the basement will be improved so as to create a workout area. With that, I would call my witnesses. We'll start out with Francesca. Francesca, please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Francesca Madden and my address is 1906 West Warner.
Thank you.
My husband.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
And you live at the subject site with your husband and three children, is that correct?
Yes, we've lived there for 15 years.
And you'd like to expand the first floor so as to have a larger den, is that correct?
Yes, we would like to create a space that would act as a mudroom.
Okay. Now, cutting to the chase, I have prepared an affidavit on your behalf as to the factors to be considered regarding a variation, is that correct? I have prepared an affidavit for you.
Hello? Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Now, if I ask you the same questions that appear in the affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
They would be, yes, either the same or substantially similar.
I have no further questions of Francesca. Does the board?
Yeah, do you want to put the architect on, John, and then we'll look at the board for questions?
Kimberly Smith, please state your name, address and occupation.
Kimberly Smith, 811 Northeast Avenue, Oak Park, Illinois, and I'm a licensed architect in the state of Illinois.
And how long have you been engaged in the architectural profession?
Since 1994.
Okay, now you have been retained to create the drawings for an addition to the rear of the man home, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you just briefly explain what, what the addition is?
We're basically taking an existing exterior deck, removing it and putting a one-story, one and a half story, it's only one and a half because it goes down to grade, mudroom. And in continuation with the existing side yard setback, the Maddens had purchased the adjacent property. And so they have a double wide lot and that lot, except for a little covered pavilion, is completely free and clear. So we felt that adding the square footage just to get them a little mudroom was worth trying to, to come here and get this variation.
And have I prepared on your behalf an affidavit?
Yes.
And that affidavit concerns the standards applicable to obtaining a variation, is that correct?
Yes.
And if I ask you the same questions that appear in the affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further presentation.
Okay, thanks. John, can you go a little bit more in depth on, on hardship here? Does it relate to the placement of the current structure or, or otherwise? Just please go a little bit deeper.
The addition will be to the rear of necessity. You cannot go out to the side and make it in any way feasible. And what we are doing is removing an existing open porch. And basically putting a foundation under it and covering it. It will extend about a foot more to the north than the existing. The family, of course, is growing. They have three children, all of whom are active and in school and they need additional living space, which is the driving force behind the variation. We can't put the addition anywhere else. And we are removing the existing open rear porch. So simply just replacing an open rear porch with a closed rear porch. That, that is, is our, our need. We have lived it at 15 years. And hopefully, we'll be living there for many years to come.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? We'll take this under consideration and I thank everyone for their time and safe driving, as I know we're in a lot of cars. Enjoy the holidays.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy New Year.
Thank you. And hopefully, everyone tests negative.
I'm getting my booster. I'm getting a booster.
Oh, good. We like to hear it. All right, thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.
Merry Christmas to everyone.
All right, let's go to calendar numbers 517-21-S and 518-21-Z. If you're an objector on this matter, please just raise your hand and we will get you promoted. While all that's happening, while the counselor gets settled, I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation for the special use. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to reduce the required parking from the required 80 onsite parking spaces to 27 spaces for a proposed seven-story retail 80 dwelling unit building, which is a transit serve location, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated December 17th, 2021, prepared by Axios Architecture and Consultants. And also that number two, the windows at parking garage are translucent, frosted or similar. And number three, the final location of the loading zone along Adams Street is reviewed and approved by the Chicago Department of Transportation. Okay, I think we have Counselor Fatikas back for this one.
Would you like me to begin?
Yeah, busy day, Nick.
Has been.
Let me, let me first just see if anyone else is here to object and then I'm going to say a little bit about the process. I think we got, we got everyone promoted. Yep, I see someone's hand raised, you're promoted, so you're all good. Okay, so there's objectors on this matter. How we handle these are that the applicant will put on their case in chief. And during and after which, the board will ask questions clarifying everything related to the matter at hand. From there, we'll switch over to the objectors who will be able to state their objection. We'll start with someone, whoever volunteers, as to be somewhat of the lead, because we do not like to hear repetitive testimony. Truly, I always say it's quality over quantity. So no repetition, but we will get all of the objection on. When it's your turn to object, you can also feel free to ask questions of the applicant as a part of your objection. Once that's done, we'll go back to the applicant for rebuttal testimony and closing. All of this time, the board will be able to ask questions and, and get the correct information out. So with that, Counselor, I'll let you start it off.
Thank you again. For the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Lux Suite Chicago LLC. The applicant owns the subject property located at 812 West Adams Street. As you can see from the survey submitted with our findings of facts submitted, the subject zoning lot is a L-shaped lot and actually has three street frontages and no LE access. The lot's primary street frontage is along West Adams, where it measures 250 feet in width. The secondary frontages are on South Halsted, where the lot measures 95 feet wide. And then the South Green Street, where it's 45 feet wide. The subject property is currently improved with a one and two-story building that was formerly home to both the Santorini and Pegasus Restaurants. The applicant is proposing to take down the existing buildings and redevelop the property with a new seven-story mixed-use building. The proposed building will contain retail space at grade, specifically at the corner of Halsted and Adams, and have a total of 80 residential units on the floors above. Now, due to the unique lot size and shape and its lack of LE access, the applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the rear setback for floors containing residential units from the required 30 feet to zero. The property is also a transit serve location based on its proximity to the Blue Line Station at Halsted Street. And Halsted, South Halsted is also a designated pedestrian street. So the applicant is seeking a companion special use to reduce the number of off-street parking spaces from 80 to 27. There will be two witnesses testifying today, both on behalf, on behalf of the applicant and as our project architect, Mr. Bill Kokalios and our MAI Designated Appraiser, Mr. Sylvester Kerwin. And with that, Sheriff, I'd ask to call my first witness, Bill Kokalios.
Great, yep. Bill, can you state your name and address, please? Bill, if you're on, you're muted.
You're still muted, Bill. There you go.
Okay.
Yep.
Good afternoon, everybody again. This is Bill Kokalios with Axios Architects, 188 North Walls, Chicago, Illinois.
Great. And Bill, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill, again, you're the manager of Lux Suite Chicago LLC, is that right?
That's correct.
And that is, he owns the subject property at 812 West Adams Street, right?
That's correct.
And you're also a licensed And you're also a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And you serve as the, uh, Architect of Record and designed the proposed mixed-use building being presented to the zoning board today, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, as I described it, the seventeen thousand five hundred square-foot lot is uniquely situated between Halsted Street to the east, Adams Street to the south, and Green Street to the west, is that right?
That's correct. We have three streets.
And no, and no alley, right?
And no alley, correct.
Okay, Bill, you're proposing to develop the property with a new seven-story mixed-use building, correct?
That's correct.
And you're seeking variations to permit the project because of the lot's unusual shape and dimensions, as well as that lack of alley access, correct?
That's correct.
Now, in terms of hardship, the specific hardship in this case relates to the, uh, substandard and even varying lot dimensions, uh, on the east and west sides of the property, is that right?
That's correct.
Again, while you have two hundred and fifty feet of frontage along Adams Street, the lot is only forty-five deep, uh, forty-five feet deep on Green Street and ninety-five feet deep on Halsted, right?
That's correct.
So, substandard in terms of depth on both sides of the lot.
Correct.
And no matter how you design or orient the building on the lot, the L-shaped lot, there's no way to effectively meet the thirty-foot rear setback without significantly limiting the residential component of your building, is that right?
That's correct.
The lot shape is also a limiting factor, uh, with respect to the off-site parking spaces that can be provided onsite, is that right?
That's correct.
Fortunately, though, as I stated, the subject property is located in a DX five zoning district on a pedestrian street and within twenty-six hundred and forty linear feet of the CTA station at Halsted Street, is that right?
That's correct.
So in addition to the setback variation for the residential floors, we're also seeking a special use to reduce the off-street parking requirement from eighty parking spaces to twenty-seven parking spaces, right?
That's correct.
And Bill, um, this was something we needed to correct with the findings of facts to middle. The, the, uh, building's parking, the garage parking, will be accessed via two driveways, uh, proposed on the Adams Street side of the building, is that right?
That's correct.
And, Mr. Chairman, in my findings of fact, I incorrectly identified only one of the two cuts. So I want to make sure that the record is, uh, consistent. And if you, uh, can go to the, uh, site plan, it shows the two points of ingress and egress, both coming, there you go, both coming from, uh, West Adams Street, okay?
Good, good. Thanks, Nick.
Uh, still, though, Bill, you believe that if the board grants the requested relief, the resulting mixed-use building will be consistent and compatible with the other mixed-use multi-unit buildings in the immediate area, is that right?
Yes.
And that's especially true in Greettown and the West Loop, uh, which is an area that's seen a lot of new mixed-use and multi-unit development over the last decade, right?
That's correct.
And Bill, before we conclude your testimony, is it true that we met with the Greettown SSA organization?
Yes.
And, uh, one of their most, uh, uh, one of their areas of concern that we spent the most time discussing was the potential, uh, retail tenant for this building, is that right?
That's correct.
And that's because this has been basically, uh, ground zero for, uh, Greettown and the entryway into the Greettown community, is that right?
That's correct. Uh, basically, we, and we're working with, uh, trying to put a Greek restaurant on the corner of Halsted and Adams.
So we're saying, and that would, uh, be a four thousand square-foot establishment that would effectively replace Pegasus and Santorini that had been there for decades, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, and Bill, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And is it, if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Kerwin, are you available?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Bud. Um, Chair, have you sworn, Bud, yet?
Not, not, not yet. Bud, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Sylvester, uh, Bud Kerwin, uh, Junior. I'm, uh, President and owner of SJ Kerwin and Associates, real estate appraisers and consultants. I have offices at seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
Great, thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, and we acknowledge your expertise based off of many, many past appearances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Bud, the scope of your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses as defined by the code, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And you also consider the additional requirements for the, uh, the parking reduction, specifically the, the parking reduction, as well as the setback reduction, correct?
Yes, that's also correct.
You physically inspected the subject property in the surrounding area?
Yes, I have on several occasions.
And Bud, um, can you please just very briefly, uh, give the, uh, board a, a summary of the existing conditions surrounding the subject property?
Uh, well, as you heard, the, uh, West Loop area here has been redeveloping, uh, many years, especially along Halsted Street, uh, in the Greettown area. There's a number of, uh, new high-rise buildings, and I call them mid-rise buildings, um, and older buildings, loft buildings that have been converted from former warehouses to residential properties. We've got the, uh, is it the, if that, the Peerless Building is along the southwest corner, right across from the subject robbery, that's an eight-story building. The Arcadia West Loop, that's a newer building on the southeast corner of the subject intersection. Uh, that's, uh, thirty-some stories tall. Around the corner on Green Street, just to the north of Adams, there's a newer double buildings, I think it's one twenty-five, similar in, uh, residential buildings and so forth like that. The Walgreens has a, uh, drugstore, uh, at the north and off of the northeast corner. There's a parking lot on the actual northeast corner of the intersection.
And Bud, based on, um, your inspection of the subject area and taking into consideration what is being proposed by the applicant, do you believe the proposed, uh, development would be consistent and compatible with those neighboring buildings?
Uh, yes, I do, and a number of reasons. Well, one, the existing improved one-story, older restaurant building and vacant lot. That's no longer the, uh, highest and best use of the land. Uh, it's also been impacted for business restaurants have been closed down, many of them, and are having a harder time reopening. Um, the, uh, other things, there's, as I said, mid-rise buildings. I believe our development is proposed here will complement many of the buildings right to the south and to the west of it as well. It's also very convenient, a short walking distance to the CTA station on South Halsted right there. And I've, uh, seen this in more cases where they've, people are relying less on having automobiles because of expense, maintenance, and so forth. They rather, uh, take a Uber or a cab or what have you like that, bicycle maybe.
And Bud, again, um, just for the record, you believe that all of the approval criteria for the special use are met in this case?
Uh, yes, I do. I believe they're met. Again, you heard, uh, testified earlier. We have a unique L-shaped lot. We have got, uh, substandard depths, uh, ninety-five feet on Halsted, forty-five feet on Green Street, really the prominent frontage is along Adams Street at two hundred and fifty-two feet. Makes it a more desirable site to develop like that.
And again, with respect specifically to the transit-serve location ordinance, the additional criteria for transit-serve locations, you believe is also being met with this proposal, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And you've prepared a written zoning analysis report summarizing your findings and conclusions in this case?
Yes, I did, and I've included photographs of a lot of the surrounding properties that I, uh, mentioned too, and others.
And if you, I'm, I'm sorry, Bud, if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements, uh, and conclusions contained in your written report?
Yes, they would.
Thank you very much. Uh, Chairman, before we, uh, turn the floor over, um, if we could maybe ask staff to pull up the survey of the property?
Yeah, let's see if we can find that. Is that, is that in the stack?
Uh, I don't have it in the slides. I'll probably be able to pull up the application.
You know what? If you could just even pull up the site plan, I think we could work. I just want to make a point regarding the hardship and and talk through that, uh, with Bill. Okay, great. So, um, Bill, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so when we talk about the hardship, and we did speak to this in your, um, your testimony already, but just to further this point, because it's an L-shaped lot, if we didn't have variations, the only way that you could develop the property is at the front of the, the wider part of the rectangle, fronting on Halsted, is that right?
That's correct. Uh, if we took out the thirty-feet requirement, what we would end up is, uh, a much taller type of building in the front, and then the back part, we wouldn't be able to use it for, for much with only fifteen feet.
Right, and that's because if you look, um, just to give the board direction, right in the middle of the site plan where the lot narrows, there's the fifty-foot dimension, are you following me, Bill?
Yes.
For the purposes of zoning, that would be treated as the rear setback. So our building would have to be thirty feet set ea-, uh, to the east. The rear of our building would have to be thirty feet east of that dimension, rendering effectively the back half of the lot unusable, is that right?
That's correct.
And therein lies the real practical hardship with developing this subject property, is that right?
That's correct. And plus, there's no alley, there's no alley there.
So there's no break to provide any other means of ingress and egress to the property, right? And then lastly, Bill, again, just follow my, my logic, if we were to set the front of our building at Adams, the building itself would only, the residential portion of the building could only be fifteen feet deep because our Green Street lot depth is forty-five feet, so, right?
That is correct. That's what I tried to mean.
Right, so, so following the setback or complying with the residential setback, treating Adams as our front would only yield a fifteen-foot-deep building.
That's correct.
Which is not financially viable and clearly, um, not preferred based on the, the development, uh, in the immediate area.
Well, you can, you can do a fifteen-foot-wide, uh, apartment building with proper staircases, elevators, corridors, and things like that.
Right, so the variations are absolutely necessary based on the size and shape of our lot.
That's correct.
Great, thank you so much. Chairman, um, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to, happy to answer any questions you or the board members might have, uh, about the program.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Any questions from the board before we move to the objectors?
Hi, yes, this is Jolene Saul. I know you just went through this, Nick. I just want to be absolutely fair. So your rare lot, lot line is the piece of the site that runs north-south that is fifty feet long, is that?
That's the technical rear setback for the lot because of the lot shape. So in order for a building to, to comply with that setback, we'd have to provide thirty feet, so there'd be thirty feet of setback between that fifty-foot dimension and the rear of our building, correct?
And would you, um, just curious, would you be able to build, I'm sure it's all one lot, but would you be able to build on the part that jogs out?
Not the residential portion without a variation. It be, it renders, it truly does, the, the configuration of the lot without variations for the purposes of residential development render that portion of the lot unusable. It would be, now ironically, if we were to do a seven-story, um, commercial building, there'd be no setback requirement. The setback requirement is only imposed in this case because of the, the residential nature of the floors above grade.
And sorry, one last, the entrance, I think I got this, but since I'm talking, the entrance to the residential piece is on Adams, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Right down the middle, uh, if you can zoom in, it's, there's a narrow in the middle of the building that says residential entrance.
All right, thank you.
And I'm s- sorry, Commissioner, just to follow up on that, we also worked with the SSA, the Greettown SSA, to ensure that there would be a retail entrance to the, the retail space also on Adams, so as not to cause any type of parking or, uh, standing zone areas on Halsted. Um, and that was something that we specifically committed to with the Greettown SSA. Again, following that point that that's our larger street frontage to work with.
Thanks.
The other questions from the board before we move to the objectors? Okay, um, let's move, uh, over to the objector side of things. And at this point in time, I want to just say, because I do see at least one person still in attendees. Um, so raise your hand if you're here to object and are not, have not yet been promoted and we'll get you promoted. Good, looks like we've at least attempted to promote everyone. Um, so with that, if someone on the objector side could please volunteer, uh, to, to lead things off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Ted Grady, G-R-A-D-Y. I'm a resident at one twenty-five South Green Street, uh, right behind the proposed project.
Great, thank you, Mr. Grady. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, go right ahead.
And I'm also, um, on the board. I should let you know that as well, so, um, we have
Which board, just to be clear?
Uh, the board of our, uh, condominium.
Got it.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so, one of the things that we're concerned about is that we're gonna fall into the, um, one eleven South Peoria, one twenty-three South Peoria fiasco of, um, terraces facing terraces with only minimum, uh, amount of feet between the buildings. And I would like to know what the, uh, west and north back of this structure will look like, and if they plan to do uh, on the terrace or, um, um, a balcony that would face our structure.
I can, uh, speak to that. There is, uh, so between, um, Green Street, between the, uh, there's a driveway, uh, right, if we're looking at the site plan, right to the, to the north of the site. Uh, so there's about twenty-eight feet between your tower and, uh, you have an eleven or twelve-story building, ours is a seven-story building. So we are not proposing any, any, uh, so right there, yeah, if you look at that picture, um, that ramp that goes up, that's about twenty-eight feet, uh, if I recall. We are not planning to have any balconies from the back of our building, face your balconies on this side, and on the east side of your building, uh, where you have some balconies also, we are not planning to have any terraces on that elevation either. And there's about fifteen to sixteen feet of distance between our buildings there.
And is your building going directly up against our east wall?
We're staying about a foot away from that.
And how will we get access to the east wall if indeed we need to make repairs? If something happens, which we just went through a million-dollar repair project on all of our surrounding walls and parapets, so what is, what is the access between the east wall and, and your construction? How do we?
Um, so from what I've calculated, there's gonna be about, there's gonna be about, probably about three, a little bit over three feet between our building and your building, your wall. Because your building is, is, that's a, it's part of your garage or part of your, uh, part of the parking, uh, exterior wall. So I've figured we're gonna be around a little bit over three feet apart from one another. Okay, and there's gonna be like a dead void of, of, almost like a gangway there.
Okay, and will there be, uh, will there be, um, uh, access be- between the two buildings?
Will there be access?
Yeah, will there be access as far as making repairs? How do, how do we get?
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would probably work something out so that way we can both, we, we'd like to main, you know, have maintenance on it, because I'm sure leaves are gonna fall in there.
Right.
Um, we can put a gate, keep it locked, so, uh, nobody gets in. We can put a gate, keep it locked, so nobody gets in there and does anything that they shouldn't be doing.
Okay, thank you. And I guess another question is, the board nor any residents, to my knowledge, have ever been contacted about this. We haven't seen renderings before this afternoon. Will there be a reach out or any kind of a meeting between you? And I mean, we are the most affected residents based on these plans. And I'd like to know if you plan to reach out to us as a board and meet with us and show us renderings? Because the rendering I just saw was a five-story building, not not a seven-story.
It's a six, it's a six-story, it's a six-story building with a small rooftop feature. That's why we call it a seven-story.
Okay. And what's on the roof?
I'm going to have a pergola, a small, about a thousand square foot, a little bit under a thousand square foot rec room, and things that go up on the roof.
And this is, these are condominiums, not luxury rental apartments, correct?
These are luxury apartments for rent.
So these are luxury apartments, not condominiums? Oh, I thought we were, we were told these were going to be residential condos.
They're designed as residential condos, and it may end up being, but that's our, in order to get our financing, that's how we were, that's how we were able to get it.
And so your thought on more rentals in the neighborhood that will increase our property values and not negatively impact? Because we already have lots and lots of luxury rentals that are not rented. So why are we building six more stories of luxury rental apartments? And 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 then if you are promoting to renters, I would say that you would need more parking.
As far as.
Do you, Bill, do you want maybe Bud to respond to the property value question as an appraiser?
Yes, please.
Yeah, there, yeah, Mark. From my research, I'm finding that there is less of a market for the purchase of condominiums in the downtown area, in the West Loop area, because of the pandemic. Market is coming back, but there's stronger demand for rentals than the condominium purchase here. Again, I would see, and I've seen it from others, that because of its transitive location, more and more occupants rely on that public transportation versus the cost of an automobile, which is much more costly these days, I understand, and the maintenance of it over time, paying for parking spaces will happen. I, I, from what I've seen here, and I think the architect referred to it too, when they went to get their financing, that that's how most lenders are looking at it on an income basis. They've probably done their studies and feel that that's more financially feasible than.
This is Commissioner Esposito. I think Mr. Grady asked a question that was not answered related to communication between his building and the applicant's project.
I could speak, I could speak to that as well. Actually, right after we filed our application, I was contacted by a representative from, I believe, the one twenty-six building and sent over the plan set that was filed with the zoning board. We did not have any further follow-up or conversation. However, given the hopefully amicable resolution of maintaining that three-foot gangway between our building and the base of the parking structure on the north side of the lot, we we would have absolutely no issue reaching out to make sure that everybody's aware of the exact dimensions and, again, our intent to maybe put up a gate and secure that space so that, you know, people are, people who shouldn't be there aren't.
And also, I can add that I will be happy to, you know, moving forward, just to have communications during the construction, to have a person, a point person that I can communicate as things are moving along with the construction.
Excuse me, this is Alex Mitrovic. I'm another board member and resident at the Emerald. I didn't introduce myself to the chairman yet and to the commissioners. May I do that at this point, please?
Yeah, so long as, let me circle back first to Mr. Mr. Grady to to make sure he's closing out. I want him to get a chance to.
Yeah, I don't mind him, yeah, I don't mind him staying on online and being part of this.
I want to keep it a little bit organized, one by one. So, Mr. Grady, did you have anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I think that my questions were answered. I appreciate all the the time. We just would, I think, as a board and as a resident, I live on the southeast corner of the building, and I would appreciate communication and a point person, as we certainly are one of the most affected in the building. But I thank you for your time.
Yeah, no, thank you for your time and for for coming in today. And so I believe, was it Mark? I forgot your last name, so apologies.
It is actually, it is actually Alex, Alex Mitrovic.
Alex, sorry about that. Yeah, so if you just give your name and address one more time, I'll get you.
Yeah, one twenty-five South Green Street, Chicago, Illinois.
Okay, great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go right ahead.
So I I do echo points that Ted Grady already made and would like to add to that. There are several neighborhood organizations that are typically involved and being, on receiving end of information regarding every new development in the area. And this is per stated preference and procedural kind of established procedure in the neighborhood for all developments that was instigated by our alderman, Alderman Burnett, who I don't see present here today, but I hope he doesn't mind me calling, calling him, using his name in the conversation. There was no feedback seeked or obtained from not only this building that we're part of, but also the neighborhood as a whole. As far as, you know, information we're seeing and hearing about for the first time today, as the first-door neighbor, so to speak, I I think that's probably less ideal, given that the scope of the project and how we might be affected adversely or in any other way. I think channels of communications don't start at the hearing, but months ahead of the time. And I don't know who, the attorney for the project has reached out to. I don't know who is it, one twenty-six South Green. We don't know anything about that building. The neighborhood organization sounds more like a business association of Greektown than than the one of the residents. I think the conversation has to, needs to take place before the construction starts and not after the fact. And we are just here sitting as board members and participating on behalf of two hundred and twelve units in our condominium association. I can ensure you that, I can assure you that there are more than two people vested in this, in the outcome of this hearing. And also, what I wanted to also refer to was Ted's comment about adjacent developments, now finished buildings on on Green Street, one twenty, one twenty-three South Peoria and one eleven South Peoria that span between Peoria and Green. And the setbacks and all that stuff. We heard the same story at the time that one eleven was proposed several years back, where the proposal was for three hundred and forty-seven, some plus micro units and that there is going to be a rental building and it was needed for financing and that the residents don't need the hundred percent coverage for parking in terms of parking spaces and so forth. We've seen and heard that story before. That's not true, and the building eventually was scaled down and it was all condominium. As far as units, there were no rentals. There are so many rental buildings in the in the neighborhood, and to add one more, you know, I don't know what lenders might might prefer. Lenders prefer different things than residents in the area. I know that because we've heard, as I said, the story before. So it shouldn't be all about how can the financing be obtained and what works and why the fundamental change in zoning is necessary strictly because development needs to take place. I think we need to step back here and find out what is the actual, you know, project all about and not find out through these renderings on the Zoom call that we've been part of since eight-thirty, waiting to to take the turn. I hope those comments are, you know, well-received and not just, you know, trying to to undermine the project. We want to work with the developer, but the neighborhood and the whole community has never heard anything about it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, sir. I know we have, we have more objectors on, so I want to give the opportunity to whoever's next.
Hi, this is Ushranji. I'm also a homeowner resident at one twenty-five South Green Street. Just want to introduce.
Great, yeah, can you state your, or sorry, can you, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Great, okay, yeah. Go right ahead if you have a stated objection that you want to make.
I'm also a resident homeowner here at the Emerald Building, adjacent to the proposed site. Echo with everything Ted and Alex just mentioned. And I have a concern over the construction, because it's so close to our existing building. I was wondering if such a scale of construction, which requires some deep excavation, would impact the foundation and the existing structure of our building? And from what the developer and the appraiser have said, I feel like they focus mostly on the rationale of building the eighty-unit-proposed apartment. I just, I mean, similar to what Ted and Alex mentioned, I don't think they've addressed the rationale of why is there such a need to build such a high-capacity apartment in such a small lot? Given like the saturation of luxurious apartment building in the neighborhood? Because housing affordability is an issue in the neighborhood instead of volume. We have a lot of luxurious apartment development recent years in West Loop, but we don't have, you know, relatively affordable price for 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 tenants. So they're focusing more on the profit, you know, on on how they can bring more money to this project by by squeezing spaces in a tiny lot, which can barely fit a basketball court. But I don't think they address the key issue here. Also, the quality of life of every resident who live in the neighborhood, who live on the block, is also a big concern. So a as a commercial developer, I know profit is, you know, the foremost concern, but you can't just single-handedly focus on on this one side of the issue and just say, oh, we we need a zero rear setback because we need to squeeze in this eighty-unit apartment building here, regardless of any safety concern or or quality of life concern for for a neighborhood. So that's how I wanted to bring about, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll direct that actually to the applicant in in two steps, and you can, you can let us know if I'm missing one. But first, if the applicant could address why the building needs to be so big, if there's the opportunity here for a smaller footprint? And the second, what type of precautions are going to be taken to make sure there's, that it's structurally sound and won't have a negative impact on the neighboring buildings as they are close by in construction?
Thank you, Chairman.
Bill, if I, I'm sorry, if I could speak to the, Bill can speak to the specifics of the the building design and the precautions in place for the build-out? But one of the things I want to keep in mind, I think two of the objectors mentioned that this was a zoning change, and this is not a zoning change. What's being proposed is a mixed-use development. DX five zoning allows a residential or a retail base and residential units above. This isn't a small site, respectfully. This is a seventeen thousand five hundred square foot lot. We're proposing eighty units where we could, per zoning, go up to, I think it's ninety-nine. So there, it needs to be some recognition that we're not absolutely maxing out all of the entitlements for the property. To the contrary, we're not building the maximum number of units because there are constraints on the building. And without making the building even taller, there's no other way for us to get to the eighty-unit count that makes the project financially viable. So as long as I could make those points, I'll turn the floor over to Bill, and he could speak to the specifics of the building design and, again, the process or assurances for neighboring foundations, et cetera.
Yeah, so, thank you, Nick. I was going to say the same thing. We could build up to ninety-nine units and we could go up to, I think, a hundred and fifty-five feet high. We wanted to keep the building shallow. We did not want to build a huge high-rise on this property. So we spread it out over the lot. A lot is seventeen thousand five hundred square foot. It's a fairly lot. It's a fairly large lot. Your building, when it was constructed, it was built on caissons. I think it's an eleven- or twelve-story building. This building will be built on spread footings. There is no basement on the existing structure. So basically, we're only excavating around six feet. We'll have shallow footings. There won't be any vibrations. There will not be any drilling. So you can feel secure. Your foundations go down sixty, seventy feet, which go all the way down to bedrock. We're going to go, we're going to sit on around six feet below grade. As far as, as far as the construction, we're hiring a union contractor to construct a building. We just finished, I just finished a thirty-five-minute building in Old Town. It was very constrained with very, with no room to build. And I work with the neighborhood personally, and I will be, I will be your contact person. I will be there daily to make sure that everything is run smoothly. And if you want me to get into the technicalities, how this building is going to be built, we can definitely sit down and talk about it in person with your group, so everybody can feel comfortable.
Okay, thank you. And to the objector, I want to make sure, before we move on, to make sure you didn't have anything else. Okay, any other objectors on?
Hi, this is Bonnie. I also live in one-two-five South Green Street.
Great, hi Bonnie. Will you state your name and address, please?
Bonnie, one-two-five South Green Street.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. And can you give your last name as well?
Last name is W-U.
Great, thank you.
So I guess I I live on the south side of the Emerald, so I will be directed, and I live on the third floor, so I would be directly blocked from sunshine. And also, I think I would feel insecure having a building just three feet away from us. You said that we have a ramp for like twenty-eight feet, so it's basically like thirty feet away from us. I feel like we have our living room window and bedroom window facing south side, and then our privacy will be included if we have a building so close by. And also in, and it's also a ramp to the garage, so vehicles will travel through the ramp. And then I do have some concern about the air quality and also ventilation if we have a building that built so close to our place. And also regarding the retail space, I'm wondering like how much of the lot will be used for retail? Because I heard lots of stories about retail stores being broken into and smashed and robbed these days. I just feel insecure to have a, like, too much retail space near the neighborhood. Also regarding the, you guys' comments about making the project financially feasible, I personally, from my point of view, previously, the Old Centaurino and the other restaurant occupy the same lot size, but they are only. uh, but they are only using one or two stores and they are able to, uh, stay there for like thirty years. Uh, but why in the case of you guys who have to develop such a large sized lot in order to, for the finance, for it to be financially feasible? And what is the rationale for building a mixed use of both residential, residential and, uh, retail space here? Uh, yeah, I guess that's pretty much of my question. Like I feel concerned about my privacy being intruded with the building so close. Uh, feel some concern about the safety issue of the retail space and also uh, ventilation because it's, uh, the ramp is between our two buildings to the garage. Uh, yeah, that's basically it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wu. So, yeah, if we turn that, um, back to the applicant as well, I, I think these are new points. So I, I jotted them down. If you could address, um, uh, Ms. Wu's concerns with privacy, air quality, safety, and then a little bit, um, more on, uh, the financial argument for it all.
Sure. Um, I'll start and then I'll defer to Bill, but the forty-four thousand square foot retail space was specifically oriented at the corner of Adams and Halsted. So that would be diagonally across our lot, um, away from the residential, uh, building on Green Street. Uh, again, that was a, uh, all, all, all but a demand from the Greetown SSA as part of our building program. Um, with respect to the rationale of building a mixed use building, the current property with a one and two-story building is significantly underbuilt for the supporting zoning. The zoning for the property is DX five. The property is located in a transit oriented development area. Under the city codes, the zoning code, as well as the TOD ordinance, this is where a multi-unit building is supposed to be located. The reason we're in front of the board is because we have an eight typical lot shape. We just wanna be able to fit our building on the lot and doing so requires a variation, which we went through, uh, with, with Mr. Kocalius. Secondly, with respect to privacy, I think Bill spoke to it as well. There's a thirty, approximate thirty feet of space between our building wall and the neighboring building. Thirty feet in some cases is more than a standard city lot. We're not proposing balconies on that side of the building, so there should be absolutely no concerns about a loss of security, a, a loss of privacy. The views will change. Admittedly, that they will. Views are not protected by the Chicago zoning ordinance. We're putting a seven-story building or proposing to put a seven-story building on our lot and the neighboring building's a twelve-story building. We actually think that that explains the rationale. We're following the pattern of development in the West Loop, specifically in Greetown. Bill, if you can fill in where I left off, please do.
Yeah, um, I can speak about the air quality. There will be no exhaust fans, no any sort of, uh, uh, contaminated fumes directed towards the south, whatsoever, uh, to the north whatsoever. Everything is, is exhausted through the roof. Uh, the restaurant is located on the corner, um, almost on Halsted. It's, it only takes, it's about forty-two hundred square feet, so it's about twenty-four percent. It's only a quarter of the site and it won't be multiple stores. We're thinking of one use, one restaurant, uh, and we have been talking to a couple different, uh, a couple different, uh, tenants that we cannot disclose. Uh, the other thing that I wanna talk about, um, about me making a profit or the, the, the rental market is very strong right now. As I said, we just finished a building, a thirty-five unit building in Old Town and another building in, in, uh, Wicker Park. We, the, the, it was a tremendous amount of rental applications. We had thirty-five units. We had over two hundred and fifty applicants apply. Uh, we know this area very well. We've talked to our realtors, um, that manage our buildings and they feel that this, this area is very strong, especially here on, on Halsted and, uh, Adams, being so close to the loop, uh, where people can, can work, can, can work out of their houses and walk to work or they can take the CTA or take the bus. Uh, and we just felt that this is a great location where we're not maximizing it. We're not building a fifteen-story building. We're not doing ninety-nine units. We're doing luxury apartments. Thank you.
Yep. And Ms. Wu, I see, I see your hand is raised, so you're still, it's still on you. So go right ahead.
Uh, I don't think they've addressed my concern, uh, my concern about the ventilation is not about their beauty emitting any like hazardous stuff from their fan or other stuff. My concern is that the distance between our building is for the ramp of our building to the garage. In that case, there will be lots of vehicles, uh, going through the ramp and they will emit gas. And then previously, because we don't have any building built, uh, in front of that, I am not concerned at all about the gas emission for vehicles, uh, going through the ramp. But given that it's only gonna be a thirty feet, which basically is the, like, uh, width of our ramp, I do have concern about that. And also regarding privacy, I do have a question. Are you gonna open up windows to the north side of your building, uh, on Adam Street? In that case, we will be able to directly see our neighbors through the window, right? And they will be directly see us through the window.
Yeah, presently, uh, if, uh, you would look at our floor plan, we're not showing any windows and that's a corridor. It's not an apartment. We have our corridor on that north side of the wall. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, um, right now you have thirty feet and a lot of, a lot of DX properties, because some of the DX properties don't, they're not a hundred and twenty-five feet deep, they end up building up to the property line and there's sixteen-foot and fourteen-foot alleys that cars go through daily, that there's more than enough space for the air to go up. Um, I don't know. I, I heard that there was over two hundred units between the two buildings right there on that photograph that we just looked at. But, uh, thirty feet is more than, as an architect, uh, is more than enough room for, for light vent and also for air quality. You're not having, you're not having trucks sit on that ramp. You're only having cars coming in and out from your building. We will not be using that ramp. We will be coming in and out of Adam Street.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, Michelle, I see your hand raised. I'm gonna go to you. I, I, uh, wanna go, Mark or Alex, I rather, has their hand raised. Um, and, uh, Alex, you've already been on, so just making sure.
Yeah, I, it's a really quick follow-up. Uh, the applicant hasn't responded to us, our comments about, uh, not reaching out uh, to neighborhood organizations. I'm not talking individual buildings, but, uh, there was absolutely no feedback requested or the same due diligence process followed that was in place before COVID. Uh, there were major hearings taking place at Merritt School for one-eleven Peoria and for other developments in the area and engaged the West Loop, uh, neighborhood organizations were heavily involved. Um, I know that Ted, uh, myself and some others sit on these, um, on these, uh, forums and, uh, we have not seen a word. So being a good neighbor starts by communicating, not at the hearing or after the hearing, but ahead of the hearings. And I would like, uh, Chairman to please solicit that response, please. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, thanks, Alex. And yeah, I'd like for that to be addressed too, because you know, a lot of ways, this does feel like a lot of stuff that we like to have hashed out prior to coming to ZBA.
Right. So I can speak to, speak to that directly. The, uh, applicant actually met with Alderman Burnett to start the process. We learned through our due diligence that the Greetown SSA was the jurisdictional community organization at this property or covering this property. So we worked with the, the Greetown SSA directly on our review of the plans, our commitments regarding the retail component. We sent out, my office sent out over five hundred, um, notices to property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of the subject property. One representative from the Emerald Building reached out for more information. We provided him with a, a copy of the plan set. No further correspondence or communication was requested or, or happened based on that. We sent out notices. We sent the plans to the person who reached out from the Emerald. We met with the local SSA. We spent the last two weeks finalizing commitments and details. We have their u- uh, unanimous support to move forward with today's proper, uh, project. I believe the letter, um, from the Greetown SSA was or should have been submitted to the board, uh, for, for its record. All of that was done in anticipation of today's hearing. So you're right. We did not meet with every individual condo association owner. We did meet with the alderman before even beginning the process. We met with the jurisdictional community organization who said they were the right ones to meet with. We met with them, gained uni- unanimous support and, and here we are today presenting our case to the board.
Also, Nick, I wanted to state, this is not a, again, this is not a zoning change. This is a, uh, a ZBA case. We can technically, on a DX five, we don't have any setbacks. Um, there are zero setbacks required. We can build, if we wanted to build a five-story or six-story property line, the property line, commercial building, an office building, we can do that. We wouldn't need any variations because of our residential component. That's why we're, we're here today in front of everybody.
Yep. Yeah, it's worth noting. You're not building a commercial building, so, um, we are here. Um. Okay, so that all makes sense. Um, I wanna go to Michelle Anderson. Uh, Michelle, if you could state your name and address, please?
Yes, Michelle Anderson. My local address is one-twenty-five South Green, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh seven.
Great. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Go right ahead.
Uh, well, first of all, I was, um, I was a zoning commissioner for several years for the city of Peoria. So I would like to first thank all of you commissioners for your time and your service, uh, particularly when these meetings are this long. Um, and I won't belabor some of the points that have already been made because they, they were excellent points. I do agree, this is a great location and that there's going to be, um, a Greek restaurant on the corner. Uh, because we must Santorini's. Uh, I will say that the major Greek restaurants that would be similar in size to what you're proposing all have their own parking lots. Um, I'm thinking of, uh, Santorini's had their own parking lot, Greek Islands does, Athena's does. Uh, so I do have a concern that there is going to be a restaurant that will be drawing people in, which means they'll be driving. Um, and there isn't parking available for those people except on the street. And I can tell you that there isn't enough street parking as it is right now because we have two cars for our one unit and it's very difficult for us to find parking. Uh, I will also say that if we're talking about consistency between, uh, this building that's being proposed and other buildings in the neighborhood, I will say that other buildings in the neighborhood have a minimum of one parking space per unit, as does our building. And all those parking spaces are used by residents of the building only. Uh, so, uh, I, I would respectfully disagree that it's being consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. And I have a concern about, uh, parking available for the, uh, people coming to the restaurant. Uh, I have no problem with the building itself. I like the mixed-use, uh, concept. Um, I understand this is a city and we have buildings that are close to each other and, um, we can't control what's being built next to us unless we buy that land ourselves. Uh, but this is a special use being requested and I strongly disagree with having twenty-seven parking spaces instead of eighty parking spaces. Um, I believe that if there were eighty parking spaces in that building, every single one of them would be filled. Whether it's on a transit route or not, the people that live in West Loop tend to have vehicles. Um, you talked about some parking that was available, for example, at Walgreens. That Walgreens parking lot is for Walgreens customers only. Uh, you look at a building like Arcadia, it actually has a parking garage, which is available for the residents, the employees of the businesses and the patrons of the businesses that, uh, frequent that building. Um, we, one of the things that I was used to, um, as a zoning commissioner, was that the developers reached out to the neighbors in advance of any of the meetings, so that if there were concerns raised by the residents, they were able to alter perhaps their plans before they brought it to the zoning, uh, group for approval. Because then they, they heard what was being said, they realized what needed to be changed. I would respectfully ask for continuance on this particular hearing because I think that they should be meeting with the neighborhood groups. I think that they should then modify their plans in accordance with the feedback that they receive. I totally understand them wanting to have a building that cash flows. And I understand that if you have less parking spaces, you have less unit, you have more units that you can rent out. And, uh, that makes the debt service numbers look a lot better because yes, I used to be a commercial lender and I do know how to underwrite a project like this. Um, the, uh, I'm sorry, I have to be looking at my notes here to see if there was anything else that, uh, I was concerned about. Yeah, you did reach out to the Greetown SSA. I will say that that is a business group and their concern was mostly the retail component and the restaurant component. That was wonderful that you reached out to them. That's wonderful that you modified your plans to take into consideration their feedback. I respectfully ask that you do that for those of us who are the residents, you're your next door neighbors as well. Um, and that's all that I had to say.
Thank you, ma'am. And, and I'll, um, address the, the continuance point just cause I think it goes back to the board, but, um, you know, we invite those requests at the beginning of the meeting, but we're, uh, we're a little bit into it now. Um, and, um, I will now go to the applicant, um, to answer any questions that were posed during that.
Yeah, I believe there were three points, um, I would just wanted to respond to. First, uh, with respect to parking for the uh, retail component, under the DX five zoning district, there is no re, there is no parking requirement for a four thousand square foot retail space, whether it's a restaurant, a store, or any other allowed use in the DX zoning district. Um, with respect to the, uh, parking at Walgreens, I, I wanna clarify Mr. Kerwin's testimony. He did not state that the parking lot at Walgreens was used for, um, anybody else's parking. It was an existing accessory parking lot accessory to Walgreens. And that was in both his report and his testimony earlier today. Um, and again, with respect to the, uh, outreach, we notified every individual property owner of the building of our filing. We met with the local community organization. We gained their unanimous support. There was outreach. We, that's, that's what allowed us to get to this point and come before you today.
I would say that my idea of outreach is when the, uh, alderman arranges a community meeting for those in the neighborhood to be able to participate. Um, and, which has been done in the past in this area. Um, I, I will say that the successful Greek restaurants in this area have their own parking lots. Uh, we still have the issue with the fact that you're putting eighty units in with only twenty-seven parking spaces in an area that is covered by transit, but is populated by the, the, the residents here have cars. And, and you can see that in consistency with all of the buildings that have been built here, that they have parking for each unit.
Yep. And, and I'll, I'll direct that as a question to something that, um, I know the board is gonna ask about. Bud, can you go a little bit more into parking?
Me? I think you guys should go a little more in parking as to.
No, no, ma'am. I said Bud. Bud Kerwin is the appraiser.
Yeah, I just was on muting there. Um, you're correct. In the past, they have been building usually one parking space per dwelling unit. But in some studies and articles that I've seen, they have found since we got into the transit served locations closer into the city area here, there was many more parking spaces being built at additional cost to the construction that were not being used. And as I mentioned again, because of the cost of ownership and maintenance of vehicles, people found they will either rent a car when they need one, take public transportation or Uber around or taxi caps. So that's, that's gone. I mean, one that comes to mind. So that's, that's gone. I mean, one that comes to mind is the building on the southwest corner of Ashland in Chicago there. I believe they have no parking spaces because it's right across from a CTA station. So that trend is what I'm starting to see, not in all, but in many places and situations like this, so.
I would respectfully disagree with you in the fact that our building has a space for each unit and they are all filled with residents' vehicles.
But if I might add, if I checked it correct, your building was built back in 2008? So what, 13 years or more ago? And that was consistent with what was happening at that point in time.
I bought two and a half years ago and I have two cars for one unit.
If I may, if I may add, this is Alex Mitrovic again. Two buildings that were built across the street from us on Green Street, both 111 Peoria and 123 Peoria, both have one-to-one ratio of parking spaces. And I'll tell you, this is not a transient area. This is a residential homeowners, people with families unit type of neighborhood. And we're, we're, don't take it lightly, being called transients. Thank you.
I was not referring to that as transient, you know, the occupants there. And I'm saying again, I understand you mentioned you bought two years ago. But when the building was built back in 2008, that was the predominant parking ratio. I don't disagree with you at all in that.
And I wouldn't have bought, I would not have bought this unit if I didn't have a parking space.
So if I can speak, this is Bill Kallius again. I'm just going to give you an example. We did, we just finished two buildings. A 35-unit building in Old Town with 13 parking spaces. And we have rented, I think, eight. There's five available. And neighbors that, with buildings that have zero parking are asking to park there and we're leaving that. We've, we've, we started renting in summer of this year, about six, seven months ago. And I can go to my cameras and you can see the indoor parking spaces are vacant right now. Because I have, I have children that live downtown, not downtown, in the downtown area. Nobody wants, they're professionals. One's an architect, another was an interior designer. They don't want a car. They don't want to be associated with a car. One is her boyfriend, their boyfriend...
Sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt. You are giving examples in Old Town, but like, we are in West Loop. I'm also a young professional.
Real quick.
Development, that's what I was... Yes.
Let's keep some organization. When you're speaking, please state your name. And again, this isn't like an open debate. We take objections and then this board runs it. We bring it back and look at all the information and discuss it. So I also, you know, one objector at a time. I do want to point out just because of, on the record, one thing that was said. I don't believe anyone was called transient. I believe what was said was transit. Just to make a clarification for the record, because we have a court reporter as well.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you for clarification. Again, I would agree with the fact that this is West Loop and the people that are buying and living in West Loop have vehicles.
Definitely.
Okay, great. Again, if you're not, if you're not the floor, please don't speak. Please mute yourself. We're going to do this in an organized manner.
Hi, this is Bonnie. Can I also add one point to that, to the parking?
So what, yeah, Bonnie, so long as it's new, go right ahead.
Okay, so I guess my concern about that is not only related to residential units having less than, it's less, even less than one-half per car, per unit, but also with the new restaurant. I live across the street of Greek Island and I can tell you, every night car flows are huge and their parking lot are full. I just don't know, like, with the 27 parking space, I don't know if it's allocated to residential or as a restaurant. And also Adams Street is not a very broad street. I'm pretty sure there will be lots of traffic congestion. Given like that people will start to look for parking spaces if they want to dine in the restaurant. And I just don't think, I think it will cause issue to our traffic.
Okay, and I'll note, maybe this question will be helpful, but to the applicant or to Bud, will the size of the restaurant trigger a parking requirement in this case?
No, it will not, but we, the people that we are talking to, they, they are talking to valet companies where the cars will be taken somewhere else into a parking lot and that will be available within that area.
Okay, great. Okay, we've got a lot on parking, so let's go on to any objector with a new objection.
Chairman, I do, Commissioner, I would like to say this, that when we do process the screening for, and the rental, when we get into the rental part of the business, there would be no way that we would rent to people that have more than 27 cars. Once we get, if we hit that limit at the time of the application, we will not accept anymore. And I can guarantee you this, there is no way we will accept any more applications where everybody's fighting for a parking spot. Again, everybody's going to have a determined spot. If, if you have a car and we have no parking, you will not be living in this building.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to move on from...
All right.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
This is Jolene Saul. I just want to clarify that point. I don't want to get into a debate about the number of parking spaces and whether it's adequate. But for the applicant, I, what I heard you just say is that you would deny someone if they had a car, which I've never heard of before. So is that what you're saying? And you were at 27 spaces?
Well, we wouldn't deny them, but we would tell them there's no car. You wouldn't be able to bring a car, you wouldn't be able to bring a car to this facility because there would be no space for it.
Okay, that makes sense. And that didn't make sense to me. Thanks.
No, what ended up happening, an example, during the pandemic, everybody, everybody wanted to have a car. They were afraid to get on the bus. They were afraid to get on the CTA. They were even afraid to walk. And we saw that and it was a really strong demand of parking. And then by the time they got to leasing the spaces, they're like, you know what, I'm going to give the car back to my mom. I'm going to give, I'm going to sell my car. It's too expensive. It's, you know, my work is only a few blocks away or a mile away. I can just get on the blue line or the...
Sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted, this is Jolene Saul again. I just wanted to clarify that you weren't denying people who had a car.
We're getting really anecdotal from the applicant on parking when I want to note that we have an appraiser here who's the expert. So like, let's, let's leave that to the expert for board efficiency. Okay, there's a, there's a Shuanglong Wang. Sorry, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name.
Yes, this is Shuanglong.
Okay, great. Will you state your name and address, please?
I'm the resident at 125 South Green.
Great, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead.
Sure. So I'm asking, I saw the imaginary plot, imaginary plot for the new construction. It's pretty nice, but it's only like the front side of this construction, the new project. I'm wondering, have you ever figured out a plot for the backside of the building? Especially in between our building to your building. Like, based on my estimate, there are like more than 20 units within our building that have zero sunlight after the construction of the new project. So when you're talking about the new project is adding value to the community around West Loop, have you ever take consideration of like, like the living quality of the residents already there? And in, and also why, and I think it's a common sense that if, have, if you had that imaginary plot or imagination about how the living quality is going to be impacted by the new project, why didn't you just directly contact the most impacted residents in the neighborhood? That's basically my question here. And just for a fair judgment from the board, I'm strongly, sincerely request that we need to figure out this project detail from the scratch with all the residents that get highly impacted. Not only for like the business, for the cash flow, like you can make all the legal terms valid, but it's still not a viable project for the community. That's all my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. And Nick, I don't know if you want to respond to that in any way?
Yeah, I mean, we've, I've said it a few times, but I'll reiterate. Each of the individual property owners within 250 feet received notice from my office, advising them of the filing, providing my information so that there were additional questions or concerns, those could be voiced. With the exception of one resident within the Emerald Building, we did not receive, my office did not receive additional calls, emails, or requests for meetings or additional information. Again, we met with the local Greettown SSA. That's the group who claimed jurisdiction in the area. There was outreach. There were meetings. We have unanimous support to be here today.
Hi, this is Bonnie.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just one comment about, this keeps coming up.
Who's speaking?
This is Alex Mitrovic again.
Okay, again, our instructions are fairly clear. Raise your hand, we'll call...
I did raise my hand before.
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't call on you. So again, you can now go right ahead. We're not going to be hearing repetitive testimony. We're looking at substance here. So, so go right ahead.
As far as this communication, I think goodwill goes a long ways. If you want to reach somebody, you don't just send a notice of the zoning hearing and that's the way to incite the dialogue. We as a board, I can speak not only as a resident, but as Ted said, as board of the, a member of the board of the Emerald condominium, we have not been approached to anyone. And we had a board meeting last night and we asked anybody if we actually had any communication with the developer. This is, this is not about jurisdiction. There is historically three or four different community organizations that are involved in everything that goes into what goes into the community. So all I can tell you is that none of us has ever been part of this SSA, Greettown. We've never heard of it. We've never been part of it. So this is convenient to be repeated and then placated, but it's not true. There was no, no reach out, period.
Okay, and I understand, and you know, I think we've all got that for when, when we go and consider. So let's go to, I believe there's one additional objector. Yuzi Shen, are you on?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, go right ahead.
Yeah, yes.
Will you state your name and address, please?
My name's Yuzi Shen. Address, 125 South Green Street. I'm a resident here. I have a couple of concerns, like first, still following up...
One second, Yuzi. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a couple of concerns. First, to follow up the parking, parking lot issue. I feel like everyone is unhappy with the answer of the parking lot. I have several things to add on, like they, the constructor just mentioned, like because of pandemic, people don't want to own a car, which is ridiculous. And let me tell you, because of pandemic, I don't want to go to the public transportation. I don't want to take a bus. I don't want to take a CTA. That's why one year ago I just purchased my own car. And additionally, as a young professional, like I believe like a lot of friends living in West Loop, they just, they just need a car. That's why like the parking lot is totally full in our like Emerald condominium. And then I can tell, like every, every night I'm like looking at the street across my window. I, I can see the, there are so many cars just parking alongside the streets, which is like pretty bad. And it's already pretty bad. And you are telling me that you are going to like build a restaurant? The previously, the rest, this restaurant has enough, almost enough parking lot to cover itself. Then currently you are going to, you tell me you don't, you are going to build a restaurant with zero parking lot plus an 80-unit, like apartment with only 20, 27 parking, parking spaces, which is totally ridiculous. And the second thing, not, not about the parking lot anymore, they are talking about the rental. They, they want to say like the demand of rental is pretty high. But let me tell you, one of my friends, just like, like three months ago, he just rented a, a apartment, just one block away from this location. And he rented and with like two months discount. The supply is huge. The supply is huge in the neighborhood. And even if you have some demand, but supply is like larger than the demand, people can easily rent an apartment with discount. So I, I don't believe that statement. And then you tell me this is legal to, to, to build like multi-storied, story building on this street. But like, let me, let's look at what, what are the existing buildings on that street? On the, on this same block alongside the Hostet Street, there are like Starbucks, Wildfoks. They are on, all like one-story or two-story building. And then there are like all other restaurants, like Greek restaurants to south of the Hostet, like Greek Island, Athena, they are like just one storage building with, with enough parking lots. I, I don't find an idea like why it is so necessary to build such a like high, like middle-rise building. And then the next point is like, you are, you are like requiring to reduce the 30-feet setback, rear setback to, to zero. But like, because you are, you have concern about the, the shape of the lot because on the, alongside the Green Street, there are only 45 feet. And, okay, so because that, that is so hard to build, like such a big residence. And I think that's why previously there was, there was just a parking lot there. This, this is not enough space to build a resident building. Why still, why do you still need to build a resident building? That is not just enough to build such a big building. So just, just do not build this. I think that that is a solution. Why do we need to reduce the 30, 30-feet rear, rear set to, to zero? I, I don't, I don't understand. Yeah, I, I think that's basically what I have in my mind.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe that we have Colin Chen. Colin, are you on the call?
Hi, I'm on call.
Okay, great. Did you want to state an objection?
Yes, I want to say objection.
Okay, will you state your name and address, please?
I'm in 125 South Green Street.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I'm also worried about parking space. If you look at the street parking...
One second, one second, Colin. My question is, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
So what do you say?
We, so we, we are just needing to swear you in. So do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm also worried about the parking space. And if you look at the street parking, every time my friends come to visit me and they cannot find the street parking. And that's the fact right now. So I do not agree that we can build another rental building with less parking space there.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you. We appreciate that. We've got a lot about parking to go back and, and talk about. Okay, so I think that I'm just going through the roster. And I believe now we should go back to rebuttal testimony from the applicant and then close it out. Because again, we've got a lot of substance from all sides on this. So Counselor, if you can go do some rebuttal and then I'm going to open up the questions, I'm going to open up questioning to the board and then let's close that.
We, we did try and go rebuttal one after the other, but I'll try and make a few quick points and then close. The demand and need for the parking, I think one of the objectors said it best. When you're by, you have the expectation that you're going to have parking. This is a different product. This is a rental product where the expectation is different. The units are different, ownership's different. The lease, we have the ability to control to some degree the number of people that are coming to the property with cars. The need for the variations is based on the lot shape. The setback reductions are a direct result of the lot's size and shape. The parking reduction is exactly, well, is also. Impacted by the size and shape of the lot, because if we had a perfect rectangle, presumably we could add more parking spaces. Separate from that, we're in a transit serve location that is. Under code intended for appropriate density with reduced parking. That's how we landed at these numbers. We provided the most number of legal parking spaces we could. On site loading. And then again, as Bill said, we did not max out the density of the building. We're at eighty units. We believe that unit ratio, unit to parking ratio is viable based on the economics of our project. And some of the other newer transit or transit oriented development projects in the immediate area.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board? Okay, um, we'll take this under consideration. I you know, I just want to, I just want to stress before we end that because we're closing for whoever's speaking. I think a lot of this could have been handled before coming to the board today. Again, we have a lot of matters to get through. So when it comes down to the community stuff, like it's not new, just, you know. It's important to engage the neighbor, the neighbors that are directly adjacent. So. With that, we'll take this under consideration and I thank everyone for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, also, yep, thank you. I'm gonna call a fifteen minute recess, so we're gonna come back at three thirty six P M. Central Standard. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Salt.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Great, I'm a yes. See everyone at three thirty six.
You.
All right, everybody. I move that we reconvene this December 17th, 2021, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes. We'll back. Thanks, everyone, for bearing with that little extension. Just had some background things we had to get through. So with that, let's go to calendar number 519-21-S. And I will read the department's recommendation. But let's see on this matter, if we have any objectors, please just raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Okay, so for calendar number 519-21-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a drive-through facility to serve a proposed fast food restaurant in an existing one-story building, which is being converted from a bank to a restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Austin Donuts, Inc., and the development is consistent with the design and layout, plans and drawings dated December 17th, 2021, prepared by DMR. Great. And again, if there's any objector, please just raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. But with that, Counselor Fatikas, you can take it away.
You begin for the record. Chairman Nick Fatikas from the losses of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Austin Donuts Incorporated. The applicant has a lease for the subject property at 4825 North Austin Avenue. The subject property is a triangular-shaped lot that contains 21,228 square feet of total area, and it's currently improved with a vacant retail building and a four-lane drive-through facility and accessory onsite parking. To the best of our knowledge, the property was most recently occupied by a retail bank, and the applicant is proposing to adapt and reuse the existing building and reorganize the drive-through facility to serve a proposed Dunkin' Donuts quick-service restaurant at the site. The plan's called for the installation of code-compliant landscaping and fencing, maintaining 18 onsite parking spaces, and then incorporating, again, that dual-lane order and then single-lane drive-through facility. In order to permit the drive-through component, the applicant's seeking a special use because the subject property is located in a B3-1 zoning district. I have three applicants available to testify. On behalf of the applicant, Dharmesh Purat, our project architect, Pawel Majaya, I'm so sorry if I butchered that, and our MAI appraiser, Mr. Sylvester Crowan. I point out, Chairman, that this is a special use. So for the, in the interest of time, I do not necessarily need to call the architect. I'll leave it to the board if there are questions. And with that, I would ask that Mr. Purat be called as my first witness.
Great. Yep, Mr. Purat, will you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Dharmesh Purat.
Great. Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And Mr. Purat, you're the president of the applicant, Austin Donuts Incorporated?
Yes.
And again, you have a lease for the subject property at 4825 North Austin Avenue?
Correct, yes.
And you intend to adapt and reuse the existing building so that it can function as a Dunkin' Donuts restaurant? Is that right?
That's right.
And your plan incorporates really reworking or reorganizing an existing drive-through facility that would have two order points and one actual service lane that would work in conjunction and support the restaurant? Is that right?
That is, that is right.
Okay, Max, you have over 40 years of experience in the business, is that right?
Yes, I do.
And one of the reasons you're before the board today on this particular property is because your existing location at 5949 West Higgins does not have this drive-through lane component? Is that right?
That is correct.
So you're proposing to close that store and relocate to the subject site again because it offers the drive-through option? Is that right?
Yes.
And Max, in terms of operations, the restaurant, the dining area of the restaurant would operate from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM every day, is that right?
That's correct.
And the overnight hours or the late hours could be adjusted, though, based on security reasons and need and demand as well? Is that right?
That is correct.
But the drive-through component would actually operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, correct?
Yes, yes.
And you anticipate being able to hire upwards of 15 to 18 employees, which is a makeup of part-time, full-time, and managers to help you run this location? Is that right?
That is correct.
Max, is your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
That is true. I would be.
Thank you very much. Chairman, again, I could maybe skip to Mr. Crowan. And if there are questions of the architect, we could bring him in if you think so.
Yeah, that's great. And Nick, I just want to note that, again, no one has raised their hand to object, but we're continuing to watch, but no one's raised their hand. So you can go ahead to Bud.
All right, Bud, and he's already been sworn, Chair.
Yes.
And Bud has been sworn, and we've acknowledged his expertise.
Okay. Right, Bud, the scope of your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses as defined by the code, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
You physically inspected the subject property in the surrounding area?
Yes, I did. And then most recently, just last Wednesday, December 15th, because it's been a while since I initially inspected it.
Okay, and you did prepare a written zoning report summarizing your findings and conclusions, is that right?
That is correct also.
And generally speaking, it's your professional opinion that the proposed special use does meet all of the approval criteria, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And again, we're looking to adapt and reuse an existing drive-through lane to serve a new use, right?
Yes, this has been a Bank of America branch bank for many, it's been a bank for over 40 years. And then they closed it in July of 2019. So it's been vacant since then, and they had four drive-through lanes, and we're narrowing it down.
Great. Bud, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes, that's correct also.
And again, they specifically incorporated your written report, correct?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the the statements and conclusions contained in your written report?
Yes, it would be.
Great. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the program.
Great, thanks, Counselor. Any questions from the board?
Hi, this is Jolene Saul. I have a couple. How far is this from your existing location?
It's four blocks.
And what are the hours of your existing location? How does it compare to what you're proposing?
It is, it is inside of a gas station, gas convenience. So we open at 5:00 in the morning, but since there is no business, so we close it down around 7:00 in the evening.
Sorry, just, your current location closes at 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM, you know, as it is, this is not a drive-through. Usually, most drive-throughs are open 24 hours. And as I have five drive-throughs, I would have five drive-throughs for the, what, 24 hours? It helps the community, the third shift version of people working at the hospital and, you know, factories. So we generate some revenue during this hour as well.
Okay, and that the proposed location, the dining area closing hour is 2:00 AM? Is that?
It will be even sooner, actually. Depends on the demand, but we'll be closing around 11:00, the latest.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Nick, may I add something to that?
Please, please.
Just for the board's sake, across the street on the northeast corners, Earl's Drive-Thru Barbecue. And they're operating seven days a week, 7:00 to 8:00 PM, and 11:00 PM on the Friday and Saturdays. But their drive-through is open till 3:00 AM on Saturdays. There's another establishment on the northwest corner, Charlotte's Bar and Grill. They're also open seven days a week, 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Sunday, and 3:00 AM on Saturday night. They do not have a drive-through there. My purpose is late-night hours are not unusual, apparently, in the area.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? Okay, seeing as we, there's no objectors, I've been watching the attendees list. We will take this under consideration, and I appreciate everyone for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.
All right, let's go to, up next would be calendar number 332-21-S. And this is at 2602 East 79th Street. Great, so one second. While we get someone from DPD on to read the department's recommendation. Nancy, are you on? Oh, sorry, there's, there's an expert, so I think I can go ahead and read this. Kareem will be on. So as I read the department's recommendation, please just raise your hand if you're by chance objecting on this matter. So for 332-21-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. All right, do we have Twain Amalasha? Kareem, are you on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, she has been on, I just spoke to her about 20 minutes ago.
Oh, she's, I, I think I see her. Let me try to promote her again.
Okay.
Okay, Twain, you've been promoted. If you're there, if you could just unmute. There we go, we see you. Now, yeah, Ms. Amalasha, will you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Toye Amalasha, and my address is 2602 East 79th Street.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yeah, I swear.
Great. Okay, tell us about what brings you here today.
Yeah, I'm here for regarding about my shop that I want to open on 2602 East 79th Street.
Great. Will you tell us a little bit about the shop? We know that there's a special use for a hair braiding salon, but if you could tell us a little bit about your experience in either operating a hair braiding salon or your experience with hair braiding, that would be helpful.
Yeah. I've been a braider since 2010 from Nigeria. So when I get here, 2015, I started braiding in these streets. And people already know me in the community, because the community is a very big community. So I go to different salons because my work is very unique. So I don't want to take my work to any other place. And it's treasurable for me to, to come to the new salon that I want to open because I grew up in the community. So that's it.
Yes, thank you. And will you, will you have employees, will you both operate and do all the braiding?
Say that again, please.
Will you have employees at the salon?
Not, not yet. I've not opened the salon yet. I go to different salon, but if I want to open the salon for I go to different salon, but if I want to open the salon for now, I will be the only one that is working. But in future, I will apply a professional licensed stylists.
Great. Thank you. And I know, so we continued you last time I remember because the alderman asked for the continuance. Did you speak with the alderman since then?
Yeah, I speak to the alderman. The alderman talked to me on, on this week, Wednesday. He called me, he told me that I should go ahead with the shop, that I should be careful. That's it. Just told me that I should be careful. He also already talked to the community that I should go ahead with the shop.
Okay, great. And what would your intended hours be?
Hmm, say that again, please.
What would, what would your hours be for the shop when you open?
Yeah, the hour would be from nine AM to six PM, from Monday to Saturday.
Great. Okay, before, and we'll get, we'll get Kareem on as well, but I want to see if there's any questions from the members of the board.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to Kareem Musawir. Kareem, I believe it's actually first time we've spoken with you today. So could please give your name and address and we'll swear you in.
Yes, Kareem Musawir. I'm at two twenty-one North LaSalle Square in Chicago, a land use and zoning consultant.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, and we acknowledge your expertise.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
So should I continue?
Yeah, go right ahead, Kareem.
Okay, so this was a, this was previously a hair braiding salon. We went to the alderman, of course, had per se had objection. Then we went to the South Shore Chamber of Commerce and a couple of other nearby neighbors to get support. And they got, we got support. The alderman finally came on board as well. And this place was already set up for hair braiding. It was last license as a hair braider and the nearest hair braiders are with, with over a thousand feet away, each of them. And so we thought this was a great site for. It meets all of the criteria for specialties. And we've submitted our findings of fact on that matter.
Okay, okay, great. Any questions from the board for either Kareem or the applicant? Okay. And Kareem, just, I think you just said, but you said it, it meets all the standards, right?
Yes, sir. And, and we have found our findings of fact.
Okay, perfect. I know we got that from you. Okay. So thank you both so much for your time and we'll take this under consideration.
Thanks. Happy holidays, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Amalasho. Good luck.
Bye.
Bye. So let's go to calendar number three thirty-six dash twenty-one dash S. Counsel Patikas, I believe you are back. So when you get situated, I want to note for the call, if there's any objectors on this three thirty-six dash twenty-one dash S, please just raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. And while everyone's getting situated, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. I have it. Okay, so the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed gas station, provided that number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Community United Development Group LLC. Number two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, signature date, with landscape plans, details, elevations and floor plan dated August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, all prepared by Riz Architects. And number three, the easternmost curb on one-eleventh Street is removed to accommodate enhanced safety for the CTA bus stop. Yeah, Nancy, go right ahead. I see your hands raised.
Yeah, I apologize. As you were reading that, I realized it looks like there was a typo in the memo. Oftentimes, we copy and paste some of the, the body and then change the names. I believe the applicant for this one is actually Eastway Property.
Okay, yeah, and the applicant name on top of the recommendation is Easy Way Property. You know, so I'm going to go ahead and read it again, just so that we have it on the record.
Thank you.
Correct in that way. So again, for three thirty-six dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed gas station, provided that number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Easy Way Property. Number two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, signature date, with landscape plan, details, elevations and floor plan dated August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, all prepared by Riz Architects. And number three, the easternmost curb on one-eleventh Street is removed to accommodate and enhance safety for the CTA bus stop. Okay, Counsel Patikas, do we have you?
Yes, I'm on.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Just one second, Nick. I want to get, I believe it's actually the applicant promoted. Yeah, or one of the, I just promoted Rizwan Hussein. So you can go right ahead and I'm just going to note again, if you're if you're here for any reason on this matter to object or part of the applicant, raise your hand and we'll get you added.
Okay, thank you. So again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. I am here on behalf of the applicant, Easy Way Properties LLC. The applicant owns the subject property located at eleven one hundred South State Street in the city's West Roseland neighborhood. The sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square foot site is currently improved with an existing and operating gas station and accessory retail convenience store. The applicant is proposing to expand the existing retail store, which currently contains four hundred and forty-two square feet of building area to nine hundred and thirteen square feet of total area. And a special use is required in this case because the proposed addition would exceed, exceed twenty-five percent of the existing floor area total. As you can see, the screen shows that this convenience store is located right in the middle of the property between the gas pump islands. And it's important to note that although we're increasing the size of the convenience store building, the four pumping, pumping islands and the five off-street parking spaces will all be maintained in their current locations. I have three witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Khalil Abdul, our project architect, Rizwan Hussein, and our MAI-designated appraiser, Joe Ryan. And Chairman, I, I will do my best to get through the script or the testimony as quickly as possible. The only issue we have with the recommendation from the department is that it's calling for the removal of one of the curb cuts. And we've worked with the Alderman's Office, as you've heard earlier from Alderman Austin, to make sure that we made site improvements that better delineated, but did not give up that existing curb cut access to the property. Our position is we're trying to make an improvement at the middle of the property to again, improve the customer experience, provide washer restrooms for customers to use, not changing the orientation of the pumps or the parking spaces. And that overall, the site improvements will be better than the existing condition. But we as a business rely on that curb cut for, for the business, generating the business that the convenience store operates accessory to. So I, for that reason, I just wanted to make sure that was it's part of the record, you knew that we were asking to maintain those four curb cuts and not give one up.
Okay, and we'll, we've got, Nancy Ratovich can speak to that at, when we get into the substance of the, of the matter.
And with that, I'd ask to call my first witness, Khalil Abdullah.
I'm here.
Thanks. Mr. Abdullah, will you state your name and address?
Khalil Abdullah, sixty-seven Tyler Ridge, Olan Park, Illinois six oh four six seven.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
And Khalil, you are the manager of the applicant, Easy Way Properties LLC?
Yes.
And that entity owns and operates the gas station and retail convenience store at the subject property located again at eleven one hundred South State Street, is that right?
Yes.
As I described, you're planning to modernize and expand the retail convenience store that is currently operating at the property?
Yes.
Your proposed addition would add about a four hundred and seventy-one square feet of area to the existing four hundred and forty-two square foot store, is that right?
Yes.
And that additional space, as I mentioned, was important to you because it is intended to improve the customer experience and give your team physically more space to work with them, is that right?
Yes.
And although your plans call for new code compliant fencing and landscaping, the perimeter of the gas station will remain exactly as it is today, is that right?
Yes.
And additionally, the capacity of the gas station is not changing in any way, is that right?
Yes.
So the four gas pumps and the five off-street parking spaces will all stay in their current locations, right?
Yes.
And as well as even the canopy that covers the convenience store and the pumping islands below, is that right?
Yes.
So again, one of the issues that's been raised by the Department of Planning and Development is the curb cut, the curb cut locations, the fact that we have four existing curb cuts serving the property, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, none of the existing access points would need to be removed or relocated in order to accommodate the convenience store expansion, which is located again in the center of the lot. And it, which is located at the center of the lot, is that right?
Yes.
And again, the landscape and fencing improvements, although we're committing to make those changes, do not have any impact on the location of the physical structure at the middle of the site.
Yes.
And the driveways that exist and serve the property today are absolutely critical to you to maintain because it allows you to handle the customer traffic that comes to and from the property each day, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
And in fact, your closest competitor is actually the mobile gas station located directly across the street, across one hundred and eleventh street, is that right?
Yes.
And today, it's served by two curb cuts on both sides of its property, right?
Yes.
So after making what you're anticipating to be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment to improve your store and your property, you'd actually find yourself at a disadvantage in the marketplace if you're forced to give up one of those curb cuts, is that right?
Absolutely, yes.
The four curb cuts, Khalil, Khalil, the four curb cuts, to the best of your knowledge, have existed at the property for at least thirty years, is that right?
Yes.
And during those thirty years, they've been used to service a gas station of some sort, right?
Yes.
And you've actually had site control since two thousand and thirteen, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
During your eight years of operating gas stations, a gas station at this location, have you had any issues with cars and pedestrians walking past the station or waiting for the bus?
No, never.
And Khalil, is it your understanding that my office filed witness, witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman, again, it is a special use request. Do you want me to bring out direct testimony for Mr. Hussein, or do you want me to go to our appraiser to speak to the special use standards? I just want to follow your lead.
Yeah, let's go, if you could go to Joe Ryan, and then if I can circle back to DPD just to hear a little bit from their perspective on the curb cut.
All right, great.
We'll consider whether you have questions for Mr. Hussein.
Okay, great. Joe, you're, you're still with us?
I am.
All right. The scope of your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria set forth by the code, is that right?
That's correct.
And you physically inspected the subject property in the surrounding area?
Several times, yes.
And you prepared a written zoning report summarizing your findings and conclusions in this case, is that right?
I have, yes.
And it's your understanding that my office submitted a copy of the written report to the board, correct?
That's correct.
Now, with respect to the standards, you believe that the proposal meets all of the approval criteria outlined for a special use, is that true?
I examined each one in the report and yes, it did.
Again, our site, our site and the physical property, it's not changing. We're making the convenience store, proposing to make the convenience store bigger than what it is today, correct?
Correct.
And we're not increasing the number of gas pumps or the capacity that can be handled on-site.
That's correct.
It's truly a customer convenience and an improvement to the existing condition that's being proposed.
Yes, it is.
Joe, if you were to continue to testify this afternoon, would your testimony be consistent with the statements and conclusions contained in your written report?
I would, and I would just like to add quickly that I appraised many of these sites for the four major gas stations, gas station companies when they were in the retail business. And there are numerous gas stations like this at corners of two arterial streets that have curb cuts on both sides, two curb cuts on each side of the arterial street.
Again, it furthers the applicant's point that there's a significant concern about being at a disadvantage in the marketplace if we lose one of the curb cuts that we've relied on for thirty-plus years.
Right, and the basis for that opinion is that this station and the station across the street have been there at least thirty years and without incident.
Thank you, Joe. Chairman, again, it's a little bit abbreviated, but that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our, our program.
Before we go to Nancy at Department of Planning and Development, are there any questions from the board? Okay, Nancy, if you're on, we've sworn you in already today. I believe you can confirm that. But if you could go into a little bit of an explanation on the recommendation as it relates to the curb cut.
Absolutely. I'll start out by, by saying, as you know, they've made reference to other sites. And as you know, the ZBA evaluates, as does staff, each site on its own merits, on its own application. So, so that's what we look at when we review these applications. The other thing I want to point out is, you know, yes, this has historically been there. However, this is coming in for a special use. And whenever a project comes in for a special use, particularly for a gas station, we view it as a new project and really need to make sure that we're looking at it under the criteria. In this particular case, and I don't know if Jeanette had the truck turning plan as part of her. Yeah, so you know, the things that we look for when we evaluate these gas station special uses is, is we want to ensure both onsite and access to and from the site as well as onsite access. But we also want to make sure that there's, you know, pedestrian safety, which is one of the criteria. It was the opinion of CDOT, Chicago Department of Transportation, as well as we reached out to CTA as well. And everyone was of the same opinion that, that closing that curb cut would really help improve safety and comfort for the pedestrians utilizing that bus stop. And, and at the same time, it doesn't impact access. CDOT, again, looked at this, we looked at it and, and really are of the opinion that this could still obviously function and, and provide more than sufficient access for both cars and trucks with just the one curb cut on West one hundred and eleventh. And that's it.
Okay, any questions from the board for, for, for the Department of Planning and Development?
I've got one question. Nancy, when DPD was taking a look at this, did they discover or learn that there had been any incidents of pedestrians getting hit by vehicles or anything of that nature in these curb cuts that, that you're proposing to, to close?
No, we, we usually don't go beyond, what we look at is, is best practices. And we also look at ensuring, and, and again, And we also look at um ensuring and and again, consulting with CDOT to make sure that what our joint recommendations are, really make sure that that we're accommodating access, but also um improving the situation. Um so you know, what we really want to do is just make sure that um you know, we don't, we don't get into those kinds of details of the incidents. But we do want to make sure that we provide the best plan and also uh make sure that both pedestrians and vehicles. So.
But I mean, I guess, I guess my point is, um yeah. If there hasn't been an incident, then how do you reach the conclusion that it's not that it's not safe for the public to have those curb cuts there?
It's, well, you've got a, I don't, I don't know if we have an aerial, but right now, what you've got is is you've got a bus stop right at that um that opening. So there's a couple of things that we look at when we look at these. And and I'll say it's not uncommon for us when we're looking at these to to try to minimize and and you know, minimize the curb cuts, both DPD and and CDOT at these closest to the intersection because, for one, we want to make sure that pedestrians have safe access. And that's for the whole length of that bus and make sure that pedestrians can get into that bus stop. Whether or not there's been an incident doesn't mean that there will not be an incident in the future. So you know, to to try to just say, oh, well, there hasn't been one, so this is not an issue um is not always what we use for best practices when when DPD and CDOT are reviewing it. What we want to do is make sure that we're um creating and and proposing um the best possible site and the safest site for both pedestrians and vehicles. Um I, you know, I guess one of the um the other things that that the applicant had brought up is is the gas station across the street. No, they, you know, they have two curb cuts. You know, our response to that is is exactly as I started this. You know, we look at each project case by case. And if that applicant came in and amended their site that that prompted them to need to get a special use, then we would be looking very closely at all those curb cuts and making sure that they're needed and and can it all function um both onsite and offsite um safely, either with a reduction in curb cuts or maybe even uh reducing curb cut width or or realigning how that that site works. So um the goal is always to make this um an improvement over the existing conditions.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board for um Department of Planning and Development? Okay, then how about any other questions from the board for uh the applicant?
And this is Jolene Solnik. I'm sure you addressed this, but can you, um what is the harm in getting rid of that curb cut?
Oh, it actually, it puts us at a disadvantage because we're now restricting access to the site through one cut versus two when our closest competitor, you know, sixty feet away, offers that that same lane or that same two points of access. Additionally, and what really hasn't been discussed yet is if it were to close that curb cut, it would force our vehicle traffic to have to circulate more onsite to get back to one of the open curb cuts. So instead of having somebody with being able to have direct access after filling the their car and and they'd have to drive around the site or at least to the farthest curb cut, which again, it it causes us to loot. People don't want to deal with that when they know they could go pull in and pull out across the street. So there's a real market competitive argument um to make. The other thing that I we tried to stress in our review with the Department of Planning and Development is we don't see a correlation between increasing the size of a small accessory retail store and necessitating a loss of a driveway. I would be the first one to say if we were increasing the size of the site, if we were adding two more gas pumps and changing site circulation, we certainly would be hitting the reset button on the access points because they could very well change to accommodate those, that scope of work or that scope of change. In this case, we're trying to make a rectangle a little bit wider to accommodate restrooms and a larger customer space and workspace for the people who who work at this station. The 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 long and what we discussed with the alderman's office is making this type of of an investment to improve the site, and that includes making sure that the uh demarcations between the drive aisles and the perimeter landscaping, putting in new perimeter fencing, those are all improvements that should be taken as an improvement on the existing condition to improve and further delineate between a uh the pedestrian way and the driveway. Um we just can't. The the long and short of it is, we can't justify the investment to make the 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 property better if it's going to cost us the access point that helps run the business uh and and allow the business to to succeed going forward.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thanks, everybody. Uh we'll take it under consideration.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Counselor Fatikas, we're staying with you again. You're majority of the day.
It's been, it's been a busy one.
Um okay, cool. Let's move to calendar number four thirty-two dash twenty-one dash Z, and this is at twenty-one thirty North Kenmore. Whenever you're ready, counselor, and I'll just note, um per usual, if there's anyone on to object, please just raise your hand, and we'll have you promoted.
Okay, thank you, Chair, again. For the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Tim and Danielle Frank. Tim and Danielle have the contract to purchase the subject property at twenty-one thirty North Kenmore. The subject property measures fifty feet wide by a hundred and twenty-three point eight feet deep, and it's currently under construction with a new single-family home and a detached garage at the rear of the lot. For the record, all of the work and the improvements that exist at the site today are properly permitted. There are no violations, corrections, or unpermitted work involved in this case. During construction, the Frank family worked with their project architects to re-concept the proposed configuration of the rear deck and stair system that would provide access to their garage with a roof deck above it. Once that happened, the architects submitted permit revisions to the city, obtained denial letters for those specific changes, and then my office filed the necessary variation application that allowed us to bring this case to you today. The Frank's new plan would essentially square off the rear deck uh proposed between the the home and the garage and incorporate an open staircase from what we're terming the lower deck up to the roof deck above the garage. Their plans also incorporate a below-grade connection between the rear of the home and the garage. And Mr. Chairman, we submitted alternate uh renderings with our findings of facts submittal uh which show the configuration of the deck as it as it would be currently permitted as well as the uh as proposed configuration with variations. I don't know if if staff could maybe pull that up right now. There are two.
And while they try, I just want to note um for everyone that David Joel, I believe, are you on as an objector? We just promoted you. So I want to clarify your identity. David, you'll have to unmute. Um.
Hello?
Hi, yeah, who who's speaking?
Uh, this is Susan Holtzman. Um I'm using my husband David Joel's business account for Zoom, but it was I that decided to do this.
Thank you. So just to confirm, are you here to object on the matter?
Yes.
Okay, so a quick rundown. Um how we uh we do this is basically currently, the counselor for the applicant is giving a summary of the case in chief. Uh from there, we'll move to you to take your direction, ask any questions of the applicant. Um afterwards, we'll go back to the applicant for rebuttal testimony and a quick closing. Um throughout this whole process, the board will be asking questions. Um so for now, just sit tight and we'll get to you, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Um again, what I'd ask is maybe if you could pull up the uh proposed rendering showing what can be permitted versus what um is being proposed. There you go. Okay, so um the uh and we'll, we will certainly have our architect explain these in further detail. But I wanted to make sure the board understands the scope of the variation and the scope of the work proposed. Um are truly limited to the space physically between the home and the uh detached garage. In order to permit the alternate design, the applicants are seeking variations to reduce the rear setback from the required thirty-four point six eight feet to two feet and reduce the north side setback from the required four point eight feet to zero. Uh we have, uh I believe, two witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicants, uh Mr. Tim Frank, as well as our architect of record, Mr. Chris Bohm. Um and with that, Chairman, I would ask to call my first witness, Mr. Tim Frank.
Great. Uh Mr. Frank, if you're on, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Tim Frank. Excuse me, I've got a little bit of a cold. Eighteen fifty-one North Mott Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Um and Tim, again, you and your wife Danielle have the contract to purchase the subject property at twenty-one thirty North Kenmore. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
And uh the subject lot measures fifty feet wide by a hundred and twenty-three point eight feet uh deep?
Correct.
And as I stated in my introduction, the property is currently under construction with a new three-story, single-family home that you and your family would move into when the work is complete.
Yes.
And uh as construction kind of began, you and your wife uh looked to re-concept the design for the deck and stair system at the rear of the property. Is that right?
Yes.
And your idea and what's really really being presented to the board today is to square off the lower deck that's immediately accessible from the rear of the home and provide an open stair to the roof deck proposed above the garage, right?
Yes.
Chairman, just for reference, if I can ask everybody to look at the as permitted, meaning this is what is allowed as of right um uh rendering, and then if staff can change it to the with variations to show the difference. Thank you. Thank you. And again, uh Tim, it's your understanding um that variations are required to permit the changes being proposed today, correct?
Yes.
And it's true that as part of this process, you consulted with your neighbors on the block and specifically both of your immediate neighbors. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
In fact, you made a number of uh design changes to the proposed garage and deck system based on their input. Is that right?
Correct.
And specifically, you reduced the height of the garage's parapet wall?
Yes.
You also agreed to replace portions of the parapet with a less opaque screening fence. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And uh Mr. Chairman, for the record, that uh specific feature or design change um on the proposed rendering is adjacent to the neighbor's spiral staircase on the right-hand side of the uh the rendering. And Tim, you also committed to reducing the overall uh garage footprint to better match the massing of your neighbor's attached garage to the north at twenty-one thirty-two North Kenmore. Is that right?
Correct.
And because your plan maintains approximately one thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet of ground or of open space at grade level on the south side of your lot, your neighbor to the south had no objections to what's being proposed. Is that right?
Correct.
And Mr. Chairman, uh emails of support or no objection uh from neighbors at twenty-one twenty-six, twenty-one thirty-two, and twenty-one thirty-eight North Kenmore were included with our finding of facts submittal. To the last point about open space, uh you were also able to show um that the proposed configuration actually maintains more usable open space than would actually be provided uh without variations. Is that right?
Yeah.
And that's uh the the geometry works out because the staircase that would necessarily need to be installed on the south side of the garage, which covers about seventy square feet of physical area, would no longer be needed. Is that right?
Correct.
Based on all these factors, uh again, uh other than the objector who signed in today, you're not aware of an objection from any other neighbors on the block, the alderman, or the local community organization. Is that right?
That's correct. I am not.
And me and you're making this investment for you and your family's future at the subject site. Is that right?
Yes, obviously, my goal is this is the last house that I live in.
So this is not financially motivated. This is a lifestyle and a, what you just said, uh hopefully the last home you ever uh built, right?
Yeah, correct. I mean, it's for improved safety, obviously to eliminate potential fall zones and from a a better functional purpose for our family.
Right. Um it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you very much. Um if uh Chris Bohm would be my next witness?
Yep, Chris, um if you're on, I don't believe we've seen you yet today. So will you state your name and address, please?
Uh Chris Bohm, twenty-four fifty-three South Archer Avenue, Chicago.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Uh Chris, again, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And you previously testified in that capacity before this board. Is that right?
That's right.
Uh your firm designed both the originally permitted building plans as well as the design changes to the deck and garage being presented to the zoning board today. Is that right?
Yes.
And it's your professional opinion that the atypical lot size and shape as well as the general pattern of development in this immediate area create the particular difficulties or hardships in this case. Is that right?
That's right.
Now, with respect to the north side setback reduction, again, it's limited to the footprint of the garage, right?
Yes, it is.
And that's because of the lower deck and the below-grade walkway were intentionally designed to align with the home and maintain the existing setback on the north side of the subject property. Is that right?
That's right.
And similarly, the rear setback accounts for the footprint of the attached garage and the roof deck above it, right?
That's right.
But to be clear, even with the setback reductions, the home's existing north sidewall and existing rear wall will remain exactly where they exist today. Is that right?
That's right.
Now, in terms of consistency and compatibility, is it your understanding that both immediate neighbors have raised decks and enclosed connections between their homes and their garages?
Uh yes, they do.
We also identified a handful of other examples of similar raised decks and connections both on our side of the street and on the west side of Kenmore. Is that right?
That's right.
What the applicants are proposing is actually quite in keeping with the pattern of residential development in the subject area. Is that fair?
Yes, it is. That's fair.
And that said, what makes our property and building plan a bit more unique is that we're still able to maintain over approximately seventeen hundred and sixty square feet of grade-level open space on the south side of our lot, right?
That's right.
And that's really important to the applicant's family because that open space will really function as the home's outdoor yard, right?
Yes.
And none of that open space will be disturbed by this proposal, correct?
Right.
In fact, it will be maintained because we're not uh incorporating a separate staircase on the south side of the garage, right?
Right.
Chris, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Uh yes, it is.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Thank you very much. Uh Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members uh might have about the project.
Great. Questions from the board at this point in time?
This is Jolene Sol. I have one for the applicant. You're currently under contract to purchase this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is your contract contingent on this being approved?
Absolutely not.
Thanks.
Other um other questions from the board before we go to the objector? Okay, I think I've I've got a couple, but I think I'd like to hear Ms. Holtzman's concerns, and then we'll circle back. So Ms. Holtzman, um can you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Susan Holtzman, and I live at twenty-one eighteen North Kenmore.
Thank you, ma'am. And uh do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, go right ahead.
My uh concern was for the open space and green space. I see some changes have been made. And it was hard from the description and my own um difficulty reading plans sometimes to see if perhaps the basement difficulty reading plans sometimes to see if perhaps the basement and the garage were somehow going to be connected, um. Now I see the, I'm looking at the view of the garage roof and then the, um, outdoor kitchen that, um, and that's interesting, but how does the basement of the house connect with the garage? Is, is there an actual connection or you go outside and then go out to the garage?
Yeah, but maybe, maybe this could go to the architect or Nick, either way.
Uh, yeah, well, let me, I can try and simplify it. Um, under, there's going to be necessarily some structural support under the proposed kitchen, so that the, effectively, the hallway or the pathway from the garage to the rear of the home would be under that kitchen. And one of the things that we worked on with our neighbor immediately to the north was making sure that the height of the deck remained the same as what would otherwise be permitted without variations, and we were able to do that. So it's, the, the connection is actually hidden by the deck above and it's at no higher, uh, dimension than what would be permitted without the variations.
But to go from the basement to the garage, is that all connected in, in interior, in the interior, or is you have to go outside to get to the garage?
No, you would, you would actually, there would be a path from the basement of the home under a portion of the deck to get to the garage.
I see.
So it's at a lower level. I think a lot of times, uh, with these connections, a lot of times they're above grade. In fact, both neighbors have that above-grade connection. Our design is a little bit different because we're syncing it so that it, it fits under the proposed deck between the home and the garage.
Commissioner Esposito, and, and Nick, just to clarify, and it is enclosed interior?
Yes, it counts as square footage, and again, it was purposely designed to align with the, um, three-foot required setback on the north side of the property, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, those were the things I was, um, curious about, the connection to the garage and, um, how much green space would still be there?
Yeah, and ma'am, just to clarify in that, cause, um, uh, you, you know, are you still objecting? We kind of formalize if, if you object, or oftentimes, you know, they change their mind, but I'd be interested to hear if you object to the project generally?
Um, it's kind of mysterious to me as, you know, the original.
Oh, sorry, ma'am, it sounds like we've lost your audio a little bit, or is it? Can you, uh, can you try, try that again, and I'll let you know if it's clear?
Hello?
Yep, this is better, yep, go ahead.
Okay, I think I understand a little bit better how the variance system works. Since this was a completely empty piece of land, it wasn't a peculiar shape, and it wasn't a hardship. Um, but I, I understand better, and I don't think that objection was exactly the right term, I just wanted more information. And, um, I think I got it, so I appreciate being able to get this information.
Of course, you're always welcome to come and just ask questions, um, okay. Um, and kind of a question on Ms. Holtzman's notes, um. So what we're looking at, the stairway, um, down, is that actual grass or is that some type of formal paper?
Uh, actual gra- it's all gonna be grass, um, from, from front to back and side to side.
Okay, great, um, that's helpful, and could you go to, uh, Jeanette? Any aerial view of the block? I just kind of want to get a reminder on how this interacts with the, the other neighbor. Oh, got it, yep.
Please, Chair, if I may, in, in addition to the aerial, we provided photos from the rear of our home looking to the north and south. Um, so there should be a couple of photos that show exactly the existing building conditions that we're building between. Um, and again, uh, Mr. Bohm testified that they both have this connection. You could see, um, both the raised deck and the spiral stair on the right hand of that photo, as well as the roof deck above the garage. And then if, if you can slide it, there were, I think, a total of four photos, two for each property.
Great, and, and, you know, Nick, I've got a question, but first I want to stick to process and let you rebut anything, um, that comes to mind, if, if anything comes to mind.
Yeah, the, the only thing on my head was whether or not there's a hardship. And the hardship in this case is that the zoning code is designed to apply to twenty-five by one-twenty-five lots. It doesn't take into consideration necessarily the existing improvements on our block. And specifically to the standards for, for variation approval, the particular physical surroundings are important in consideration of our request. Both of our immediate neighbors have a similar type feature. Now, ours was designed with a little bit less, uh, massing because it's lower and under a raised deck that would otherwise be permitted, but it's offset significantly by the seventeen hundred square feet, seventeen hundred and sixty square feet of open space on the south side of the lot. That's what makes our property unique. We're fifty feet wide, but we also get to offer this huge open space to compensate or offset any type of impact that could be created. Um, and again, I, I just would refer the board to the first standard in, uh, uh, the, the variation findings effect, that again, the physical surroundings, shape and topography of the existing property, um, are unique. Not all lots measure fifty by one-twenty-three point eight. Not all lots are located immediately between two properties that have constructed enclosed connections between the home and the garage. We're simply trying to follow that trend, albeit in our own design.
Thanks, Counselor. Um, any other questions from the board?
This is Jolene Saul again. I don't know if you know, Nick, if the adjacent properties, um, have variations or if they were built as of right. I don't, they could be older, so maybe the zoning code was different, I just don't know if you did any research.
That's a really good point because that's actually one of the reasons, one of the points of discussion we had with Alderman Smith. Um, if you recall, she continued this case two months ago, um, just to have a little bit more dialogue about what was being proposed. And one of the first things she asked about was if we had any information on how the connections at either side were permitted. It's our best, based on the information available, we believe that administrative adjustments were approved. I, I know the code has changed over time, and with the, um, uh, the new ordinance that applies to the roof decks above the garage, because our request takes the technical setback to zero, we're not eligible for an administrative adjustment. Um, so we're trying to get to the same point, just using a different vehicle, variation versus administrative adjustment.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we've got what we need, um, so thank you very much, everyone, for your time and enjoy your weekend.
Have a great holiday, everybody, I'm sure you've heard enough of me today, have a great holiday, happy new year. I think we're done with you. Yes, I think so. I hope so, because I'm not ready to do anything else, so.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, have a great holiday, bye.
Bye. All right, we're going next up to calendar number four forty-four dash twenty-one dash S. Um, it's a special use, um, at eighty-one oh eight South Exchange Avenue. If you're on to object by chance to this matter, um, please just raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of residential below the second floor to establish an additional dwelling unit in the basement of a two-story, two-dwelling unit building. Provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout, the plans and drawings dated February fifth, twenty-twenty-one, all prepared by Oladipo Ani Mashan, like licensed architect. Counselor Moore, let me know if you're on.
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me? I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, sorry, my, my internet got a little funky for a second, um, yes, so go right ahead.
And then hopefully I have Esther, uh, on, if, if she's here, could we swear her in?
Yep, Esther, do we have you on? Let's see.
I'm, I'm here.
Great.
Are you getting me?
Yeah, yeah, we can, um, uh, can you go ahead and state your name and address, please?
My name is Esther Chukudabello. Um, my address is eighty-two fifty-nine South St. Lawrence Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one nine.
Great, thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
So Esther, um, you first bought this building in what year?
Uh, the year two thousand.
And, uh, when you bought it, you were, all of the marketing for it and the price you paid, you thought you were buying a three-flat, is that right?
That's correct.
And you only found out, uh, some, sometime later, in what year did the city, uh, tell you that, uh, the basement unit was not legal as far as they were concerned?
Um, I don't remember clearly, but it was, uh, early, uh, somewhere between two thousand and seven or between two thousand and seventeen, I can't recall exactly the, the year.
Okay, but they, they brought you to building court and you had to tear out all of the walls in the kitchen in the basement of this building, is that right?
Everything had to be gutted out in the basement.
Okay, and then more recently, you were talking to an architect or someone and you realized that because you have a double lot, your zoning would allow three units, the only problem is that the ground floor, uh, that you're, you're in a, uh, C district, uh, the whole block is a C district, a non-conforming C district, and you're not allowed to have a unit below the second floor without a special use. I- is that what you became educated to find out?
Yes, that you are correct.
So you hired an architect and you have made plans and you have, um, submitted the plans, and if this board sees fit, you can, uh, put back that, that, uh, third unit that you tore out, is that right?
That's correct.
And actually, your lot has a whole, uh, nicely done side grassy lot, and it's fenced in, and it would be ideal for a family with children because it'd be a safe, safe space for them, is that right?
That's right.
And you've put a lot of money into this building, I think there was a picture up a minute ago. You re-clad the entire building and at one point you, um, totally, um, redid, gut, rehabbed the second floor, is that right?
That's correct. I really, I rehabbed the first floor, the, right.
Okay.
And the ceilings.
And, um, the entire block, though, from Eightieth Street to eighty-first, uh, from Eightieth to eighty-eight, eighty, from Eighty-first Street to Eighty-first Place is entirely one hundred percent residential, except for an old bar building that's been, the bar's been closed for many years and people live above it, is that right?
That's correct.
So in terms of fitting into the neighborhood, there really are no commercial, i- it's all residential, so having another unit on a double lot, uh, would fit right in, is that right?
That's right.
Now, we were surprised two months ago when we had this case in front of the board to find out that the alderman, even though I had sent him a copy, uh, we hadn't heard, and he was against it, uh, because he said there's too many vacant apartments in the neighborhood, is that right?
Yes.
And, uh, so we got a continuance, so you could go see him and tell him your story and tell him what a clean place you, uh, run and how much care you put into it, and see if he might, uh, you might be able to convince him to, uh, remove his opposition, is that right?
That's correct.
And you did, after several calls and, and, uh, you did eventually, you were able to go see him, is that right?
That's right.
At the time, he told you he was gonna think about it, but then a few days ago, he called you and said he wasn't gonna object anymore, is, is that right?
Well, he, um, he told me that he, you know, from what I have, you know, explained to him, I, yeah, kind of have, uh, led aside what his concerns were regarding his feelings about the, the apartment. So, you know, he, he will, he's, s- sounds like he, that I have sold him on, on, on my, uh, pro- proposal.
Okay, and, and as a matter of fact, um, you've had inquiries in the neighborhood of people who would probably, that you don't have an actual lease, but probably would lease the, the, uh, that unit if, when you're able to, to, uh, get it permitted and fixed up, isn't that right?
Oh, yes, that's right, since they saw the sign, that, you know, I've been approached, you know, a couple of people and who showed that they will be interested if I eventually get it in.
Okay, and you and I worked out a, a witness statement, where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant the special use to requesting, and if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently with it, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, we have, I think the architect Laddie is on. I could ask him one or two questions, and then I think we have Mr. Ryan.
Okay, yep, let's get, um, uh, Laddie Ani Mashan, um, you state your name and address, please?
Yes, uh, good evening, my name is Oladipo Ani Mashan, I'm with, uh, LA Design, and, uh, the address is eleven thirty-six South Delano Court, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six zero five.
Thank you very much, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
So, so Laddie, uh, you have designed, uh, plans that if the board were to grant the special use and you were to submit them for a permit, they would totally, uh, comply with all ordinances and rules and regulations and fire codes of the city, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And because there's a, uh, she, um, Esther has a side lot, and actually, the building to the, uh, north is, is gone, uh, there'd be plenty of light and, and air, uh, available for this basement apartment, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and in your opinion, it'll fit right into the character of the neighborhood, is that correct?
Yeah, that, that is correct, yes.
And you and I worked out a, a, uh, statement where you, uh, addressed each of the, the, uh, criteria necessary for the board to grant this relief. If you were to continue to testify, would you testify consistently with it?
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, and if we could have Mr. Ryan, who's, I think, has previously been sworn, um, we could wrap up our case.
Mr. Ryan is sworn and, uh, his expertise is also acknowledged.
Thank you very much, um, Joe Ryan, at my request, did you do a study and a report, uh, as to whether or not, uh, this, uh, allowing a basement apartment at this location would have a negative effect on the surrounding property values and whether it could meet all the other criteria necessary for the board to grant it? Do we have Joe Ryan? Hope he didn't forget about us. I can call his cell phone.
We, we need Joe.
Yeah, okay. Let's see if he picks up, if he doesn't, maybe we could pass it and I'll chase him. So, Mr. Chairman, I got the voicemail, um, could we pass the case and I will find him, I hope, and, uh, and let, I'll raise my hand when I have him.
Yeah, and I, I would just say, of course, the next case is, um, our next case, we really want to hear this because we've come far on this, so. Um, if, you know, everyone buzzed Joe Ryan, he should still be on.
Okay, uh, I, I will, uh, let you know as soon as I find him, thank you very much.
Yep, and so to the applicant, we, we are gonna circle back, we're gonna track down the, the final piece to this. Um, and I apologize on his behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so let's go, number 446-21-Z. So Counselor Ben Weber, let me know when you're present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, Ben, we can. Welcome. And as everyone gets situated, I want to just raise, if there's any objectors on the call for this matter, please just raise your hand and we will get you promoted. So with that, Counselor, you can go right ahead. I'm going to watch to see if anyone raises their hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for the record, my name is Ben Weber from the law firm of Shane Banks Kenyon Schwartz. I am the attorney for the applicant of this matter, Luis Cusco. The applicant seeks a variation to the required, or seeks a variation to reduce the required west side setback from 2.8 feet to 1.12 feet in order to construct or really legalize a one-story rear addition to the first floor unit of the existing two-story, two-dwelling unit residential building. The applicant, Luis Cusco, has resided at the property with his family since 2002. The property was improved with a two-story, two-dwelling unit residential building that is over 100 years old. The applicant resides at the property with seven other people, including his wife, daughters, and grandchildren. As the size of the applicant's family has grown over 20 years at the property, the applicant hired a licensed architect and general contractor to construct a single-story addition to the rear of the first floor unit. The proposed addition was constructed in 2016. However, after completion of the addition, the applicant was notified by the city that it was constructed without permit and is non-conforming as to the west side setback. The applicant was not informed by its architect or contractor that the addition was non-conforming or was constructed without a permit at any point in time prior to notification from the city. The purpose of this variation is to legalize the existing west side setback of the building and the addition, which is the same setback that has existed on the property for over 100 years and is adjacent to an alleyway. The proposed variation requires a setback reduction that is only 0.28 feet greater than the reduction that would be permitted as an administrative adjustment. Without the requested variation, the applicant will be required to demolish the addition, which has existed on the property without issue for over five years, and eliminate vital residential space for the applicant and his family. Should the requested variation be granted, the existing two-story, two-dwelling unit residential building will remain at the property and entirely unchanged. The applicant did not receive any objections to the addition during or after construction and the applicant has not received any objections to the proposed variation. With that, I would like to call my first witness, which is the applicant Luis Cusco. But first, or in addition to his grandson, who will be acting as a translator, Edgar Venegas. Are both of you online and still available?
Yes, of course. I'm Edgar Venegas. I am Luis Cusco's grandson. I'm here to be his translator.
Thanks. And Edgar, will you state your name and address, please?
My name is Edgar Venegas. I also live at 3343 West Warner.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to translate directly from English to Spanish and then in reverse from Spanish to English?
Yes, to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll go ahead and get Mr. Cusco's forename. So Edgar, you can translate, but Mr. Cusco, will you please state your name and?
Señor Cusco, puede decir su nombre y dónde vive?
Yo me llamo Luis Antonio Cusco.
My name is Luis Antonio Cusco.
Vivo en 3343 West Warner.
I live at 3343 West Warner.
Perfect, thank you. And Mr. Cusco, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Luisito dice, juro que va a ser la verdad en los actos de ahorita.
Sí, juro.
Yes, I swear.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cusco, if you wouldn't mind just restating your name for the record?
Luisito, si no quiere, puedo decir su nombre otra vez para el record?
Mi nombre Luis Antonio Cusco Yankee.
My name is Luis Antonio Cusco Yankee.
Thank you. And are you the owner of the property located at 3343 West Warner?
You said is the due in the property that 3343 West Warner?
Sí.
Yes.
And do you currently reside at the property with your family, including your wife, daughters, and grandchildren?
Ahorita usted sigue viviendo en esa casa con su esposa, hijos y nietos.
Sí, vivo aquí.
Yes, I live here with them.
And did you submit an affidavit with our findings of fact in support of this application?
Usted sumetió la aplicación de los encuentros que tenían ahí.
Sí.
Yes.
And were the statements made in that affidavit true and accurate?
Y todas las palabras que saben ni en ese evidente eran verdades y correctas.
Sí.
Yes.
And do you adopt as your testimony today the statements that were provided in that affidavit?
Y usted adopta esas palabras que dijeron en ese testimonio.
Sí.
Yes.
Thank you. And I think for the sake of brevity, I think that's all I have for Mr. Cusco unless any of the board members would like to ask questions to him at this time or I can proceed to the architect and we can wrap up with questions later.
Any questions from the board before we get to the architect? I think I'll have some after the architect, so if we go ahead and get Oscar Alba on.
All right, Oscar, are you on the line still?
Let's see. Okay, you know, we don't need Oscar in the same way as we need the person on the previous case.
I understand.
As Oscar is an architect, but he, I'm not seeing him on. So let's see if we go down questions, if there's any that can't be answered because we do not have Oscar. But as, you know, we'll see, as this I know is already built. So to lead off questions, I'd just like to hear a little bit more from Mr. Cusco about what happened, why there were permits applied for back when this was built.
Él dice que solo quiere saber por qué comenzó a construir sin permisos cuando se construyó.
Porque tuve mucha familia y muchos nietos, no tuve en donde poner.
I had a lot of children and a lot of grandchildren that I didn't know where to put them.
No sabía, pero lees aquí cómo es.
I didn't know. I didn't know. I didn't know what the laws were before I did it and I just did it without knowing anything.
Yep. And so just to confirm, was the architect that was going to be on, was that the architect that helped at the time of the build?
El arquitecto que va a venir es el arquitecto que te ayudó en el tiempo que le construyeron.
Sí. Yes.
Mr. Cusco, were you notified during the construction of the addition, were you notified that it was being constructed without permits or that it was otherwise non-conforming?
Cuando eso estaba haciendo la construcción, cuando el arquitecto le dijeron a cualquier instante que lo que estaba construyendo no era con permiso o no era conforme con el barrio.
Nadie no me dijeron nada.
No, nobody told me anything.
Okay, and so just to confirm that, so after, even though the architect should have been a person to tell Mr. Cusco what was needed, I don't know how better to say this, but why did you keep, why did you keep this person hired up to this point?
Les quiero preguntar qué, por qué la razón que el arquitecto no les dio el permiso para construirse cosas, por qué le tiene arquitecto hasta ahorita.
He says he doesn't understand.
I'm just trying to understand the chain of events, but if this architect was the person who built illegally, or sorry, planned the build illegally without permits back at the time, why are you, there's no good way to phrase this, but why keep this architect around? Because this person should have told you that you needed certain permits.
Le quiere nomás saber por qué tiene el mismo arquitecto que tenía que construyó esa adición a la casa aunque la persona no le dio los permisos para construir esa extensión. No sé, nomás quiere saber por qué todavía le sigue contactando.
Ahí.
Sí.
Él empezó a hacer, él empezó a hacer y él. Él, lo que sigue hacer, el arquitecto.
He says the architect offered to do it and he did it.
Y espero que se acabe.
And I hope that he's also the one that finishes it because he just wants to close it all.
Got it, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to clarify, Luis, when you say finish it, you mean complete, the legal aspect of it, that not, there's not more work that needs to be done. You're just referring to the legalization of the addition, correct?
Cuando usted dice para completar la casa de la adición de atrás, usted solo refiere a la legalización de la casa de atrás.
Sí, yes.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure the applicant knows that it's the architect and the builder who definitely should have known that a permit was needed.
Él dice que le quieren nomás decir usted que el arquitecto y el constructor eran las personas que le tienen que dar la serviduría de pedir el permiso para esa extensión.
Sí.
Great. And just to confirm, so the architect's name is Oscar Alba. What is the, was there a builder and what was that person's name?
Para confirmar, el nombre del arquitecto era Oscar Alba. Sí, y para confirmar también hay otros constructores que estaban parte de la construcción o no, aparte del arquitecto.
No.
No, there wasn't.
Okay. So who built the, who built the addition?
Entonces quiere saber quién construyó la adición.
El constructor.
He says the builder. Do you want me to ask him about the name of the builder?
Yeah, does he remember that person's name?
¿Se acuerda el nombre de ese constructor? No recuerdo.
No, I don't remember.
Okay, got it. Okay, Ben, can you describe a little bit for the board hardship here, just one more time?
Yes, I'm happy to. So the addition, so the applicant will suffer hardship because the addition was to accommodate the growing, not just in physical, but in numbers, growing, the growing size of his family. The addition actually provided for not just additional living space, but it also provided, or it also added on two additional bedrooms to the, to the ground floor unit, which are, which have obviously been put in use for the past five years. The hardship that stems from this is that, is that without the requested variation, the rear addition will need to be removed and the living space as well as the two bedrooms that has been there for five years without issue would have to be removed. This is also particularly, this is a particularly high level of hardship considering that the rear addition does not increase the total west side setback that did exist as it merely extended the west side just back further towards the rear of the property. So that the hardship would be the loss of a vital living space for the applicant and his family who have resided there for 20 years when there's no, there's no true benefit, especially in light of the fact that the western, or the, to the west of this property and the setback that we're seeking to reduce is just an alleyway. So there is, there is no impact on anyone else or, so there's no real benefit to, to, to the removal of the addition and the denial of the variation.
Yeah, please, Counselor, just what would the, what do you think in monetary terms the cost of demolition would be?
So that is included in the findings of fact. The architects in this case did estimate that the removal and some reconstruction would, would cost approximately $10,000 plus, depending on if the, depending on, which could be higher if, if the addition, if another addition was intended to be reconstructed. So the, a minimum of $10,000 to at least demolish, demolish the addition that's existing as of today.
Great, okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Luis, and thank you, board members. I appreciate you guys, appreciate you guys' patience and sneaking us in at 5 o'clock. I got to say, it's pretty well done, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. Enjoy your weekend.
Thank you as well.
Thank you. All right, Tom. Hey, Tom, I know you're on the phone, so if you could just give us an update?
I'm sorry, he, I have not, he's not responding to his own cell phone or his office. I just got, from the 19th ward, I just got his daughter's hair shop number, so I was going to call there and see if she knows where he is. But I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know where he is right now.
Okay, do you think if I do, if I do like a 10-minute break, do you think we can find him? Because I'm.
I will try, but I, I don't know. That's, since, since you left, that's all I've been doing is trying to get him and I've texted and left messages and everything and I only have his two numbers. Now, you know, he and I talked about this just a couple of days ago because he wanted to know, was the alderman still objecting? And at that point, I didn't know and he was preparing in case he was to try to refute it. So he was aware of this, but what happened to him, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I know. I hope he's okay. I want to give it one last shot because I have a lot of sympathy for applicants that wait this long in their day because, you know, there's of course an expensive time, there's often monetary expenses and I think about it a lot. So if we can call recess and give this 10 more minutes to see if we can find Joe.
I'll do my best.
Maybe if not, we'll do this first thing, query, and I think, you know, we just apologize on behalf of whatever happens to the applicants, but we're going to call a 10-minute recess.
Thank you very much.
Yep, so Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes. We'll see everyone at 5:28. Thank you. I vote yes. We'll see everyone at 5:28. Thank you. Tom, just as a heads up, I believe Joe has been found. You're, you're muted.
Thank you.
That is what, that is.
I didn't find him, so however he got found, doesn't matter, just so he is found.
We work magic sometimes. And all, all credit goes to, uh, goes to Victor.
Uh, well, I, Victor, Victor is a miracle worker at a lot of levels.
Any luck, Tom?
Well, I got a text, uh, from Victor, I think, saying that he's been found. I don't know. And that he's, he's going to, he's logging in apparently. But.
Chairman, did you hear for sure that we're gonna?
Yeah, so, yeah, uh, um, Victor said it sounded like he was getting right on. Um, so we're gonna keep trying for the last matter of the year.
So, okay, um, so how long we giving him? Another 15 minutes, half hour?
Yeah, he's, um, yeah, I, I don't, yeah, we'll, we'll play it by ear. I mean, for the applicant, I really want this to be voted on. So he's in process. He's being sent the sign-in info again. It's a good step. Tom, I believe he is signing off. Um, we're gonna take it from right in the middle, which was near the end, which is right where we were. So for everyone, um, can you just, while we're waiting for him, just give another summary?
Oh, yeah. So, uh, you want me to just summarize where we were?
Yeah, so, so we've had everyone speak. This is what we're looking at.
Yeah, sure. So Esther, uh, told her story that, uh, she bought this, uh, double lot, a three flat in 2000 and she has, uh, and she bought, she paid for a three flat and, um, she had three units there. And then sometime around 2007, or she's not quite sure when, uh, the city cited her for having an illegal basement apartment, which that was news to her because when she bought it, uh, uh, it was there and she was, she paid for it. Uh, she actually had a building court case. She actually removed all of the walls and the kitchen. And, uh, i- if you were to go there now, it's an empty basement. Uh, but she has learned that since she has, um, this dash two zoning, uh, she could have three and a double lot. She can have the FAR and the MLA all work. It's just this, the ground floor special use that she needs to be able to have the third apartment. And the entire block is residential except for one old bar. And so, um, she's asking for a special use to allow her to, uh, uh, improve the basement into a third unit and she's had interest when we put the zoning sign up. And, um, uh, it, it would be an ideal apartment for, um, the, uh, because it has a, uh, fenced in yard that's beautifully kept and, um, all that we need is, uh, your, your, uh, Joe Ryan's testimony and your vote.
Thank you. And you know, we've got evidence he's coming, but I'm gonna set a time. We're gonna give him until 5:45.
So you got a time. You give him the 5:45, so another eight minutes we're gonna give him?
Yep, and we're even going the lengths Victor's gonna try to call him and just put him on speaker. Um, you know, Victor sent him the info again. Um, we're doing everything but showing up to his house, turning on his computer.
Yeah, obviously.
Well, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of Esther, uh, we both apologize and thank you for your indulgence here.
Oh, of course, I apologize to Esther on, on behalf of this situation. You know, she's the client.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I got him on speaker.
Great.
Sorry, Chairman.
Yeah, Joe, so you're there. Can you hear us, Joe?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, um, so you've been sworn in. Um, we've acknowledged your expertise and we are currently, um, discussing the last matter of the day, um, at 8108 South Exchange Avenue. So, um, uh, once we officially reconvene, which I am being reminded that we, uh, we need to do, um, Tom is gonna move forward with those questioning. So, um, I move that we reconvene the meeting. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Great. I vote yes. Great, I vote yes. We're back. So Tom, go right ahead. Joe sworn in.
Thank you, Joe. Both Esther and her architect have testified. And you're familiar with the address. And you've actually been to the scene and you've taken pictures of it, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And you, at my request, made a report and as to whether or not this application would, if granted, would have a negative effect on the surrounding property values, is that right?
That's correct, and it would not.
And you also looked into all of the other criteria necessary for this board to grant the relief requested, is that right?
Yes, there were several, several similar uses across the street and on the same side of the street as the subject property.
As a matter of fact, there's, there are no commercial uses, even though it's a C2, the whole block is C2, there's no other commercial uses there at all, isn't that right? Except for a closed bar.
Right, there were none open, correct.
And so in your opinion, it can meet all of the criteria. And if you were to continue to testify, would you testify consistently with your report that you have, that we have filed with the zoning board?
Yes.
All three witnesses are available for questions.
Okay, great. So, Board, I know we've been a little all over the place on this one. So do we have any questions, any clarifying questions or substantive questions? Okay, we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you very much for your indulgence and the extra time and
Thank you.
Please have a, have a wonderful Christmas and New Year.
Yeah, you as well. And thank you very much, Ms. Chuku DeBalo.
Thank you.
Happy holidays and
Same to you all.
I'm apologizing on everyone's behalf because you had to wait all day. And so the pain here really goes to you. So we apologize, but enjoy your holidays.
No problem. Always well that ends well.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, great.
I can go now?
Yeah, you, you can, ma'am. Thank you. I move that we convene in the closed session pursuant to section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. For those viewing by live stream, we will return from our closed session and the live stream will continue at that point. Commissioner Toyah, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Well, yes, we're closed. Thanks, everyone.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, we've returned. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. I move to approve application for calendar number 288-20-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, commission- and let me start over, sorry. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers 288-20-S and 289-20-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
I was recused.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, they're approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 491-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
No.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 492-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 493-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Great, I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 494-21-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I was not present and the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 495-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I was not present and the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 496-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 497-21-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
No.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers 498-21-Z and 499-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers 500-21-S and 501-21-C. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 512-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 513-21-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 514-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 515-21-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 516-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers 517-21-S and 518-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
No.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 519-21-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve applications for- sorry, I moved to approve application for calendar number 332-21-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 336-21-S without the Department of Planning and Development's third condition. So said differently, only with the Department of Planning and Development's first condition and second condition. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
No.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved as stated. I moved to approve application for calendar number 432-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
No.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 444-21-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number 446-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve all continuance requests to the date stated by me. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, they're approved. I moved to approve all withdrawal requests. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. We did not have any dismissals, so I won't- We did not have any dismissals, so I will not read that one. I move to approve the written resolution containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for board calendar number 447-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, it's approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for the board's for the board's November 19th, 2021 regular meeting with the exception of board calendar numbers 467-21-S, 468-21-S, 469-21-Z, 482-21-Z, 483-21-Z, and 395-21-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes, and happy holidays everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, happy holidays.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes, happy holidays everyone.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes, and have a very merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you. I vote yes, we're adjourned and I echo all the commissioners and I want to say thank you to them, thank you to all the staff. A lot of hard work goes into this and it's been a great year. So have happy holidays and we'll see everyone in 2022.